Good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock. We have a hearing in order. Welcome. Thank you all for coming. I'm just gonna do a brief introduction to the protocols and then turn it over to the moderator to run the meeting. First, in the rare possibility that we don't know everybody, Bruce Adams, I'm the first selectman. This is Chris Garrity, selectman. Jeff Parkin, selectman. A big thanks to my administrative assistant, Joyce Kearns, who's been on the better part of today, getting the ability to broadcast this. We're having some trouble. She may not happen so hard to Joyce. Treasurer Barbara Herbst has had a huge help in this whole process. And I think that's everybody for tonight anyway. Our moderator for tonight will be Steve Penner, who's done this before. I'll introduce him in a minute. And I'm hoping that Board of Finance Chairman Marcus Vedic will be here. He said he will drive through here and he maybe has to speak a bit to the financial aspect of this and the town's ability to pay at this point. The purpose of this meeting, this hearing, excuse me, correct me if I use "meeting" again, the purpose of this hearing is for the Board of Selectmen to listen to your concerns, whether you're for this project, opposed to this project, or have questions. We are here for the third time, because actually, this is actually the sixth hearing on this topic, but the third one in this round. And we've been, all three of us, at all of them, and we have listened at all of them, and we will listen to this. The difference in this one is that, once we're done listening, and once you're done having your say, we will adjourn this hearing and convene a Board of Selectmen meeting right here. Just like all selectmen's meetings, it's a public meeting, and you're welcome to stay and listen. And we will hopefully come to some sort of an agreement as to where this project should go from here. Let's see. Handouts. There are some handouts over here on the table if you haven't gotten them. There's a blue one. On one side of the blue one is a timeline from 2012, when we first obtained some funding, very small grant, which was obtained in 2012 to present. So it's been seven years that that timeline, one side of the blue one, covers. The other side of the blue handout is the recommendations that were made by Streetscape Committee Two. There was a Streetscape Committee One, who accomplished their charge and made a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. That committee was dissolved, because they accomplished their charge, and a second committee was put together, and they were given another charge, and they accomplished their charge as well. They have not yet been dissolved, but, as I said, the other half of the blue handout is Streetscape Committee Two's recommendation, cost, and a snapshot of funding put together by Treasurer Barbara Herbst, and funding availability for this project. The white sheet, one of the best information sheets that I've ever seen, not just in this job, but in any job, it has more information on it than you could possibly imagine. It's a ten-year budget and mill rate and debt service snapshot. It's, can't put together by Barbara, lose it every year at a time, and it is invaluable. And the other side of the white one is current debt service. We've recently retired some fairly large debt. We'll be retiring some even larger debt next year, and that is to show available funds, possible available funds for this project, should the town choose to spend on it. I do have a few letters that I've received that I would like to read into the record.
Why are letters being read to the record?
Here? Should this be at the selectman's meeting? I'm not sure. It's up to you. Selectmen, hold on. Read the letters at the selectman's meeting. Okay? Should we agree, Chris? Read the letters at the selectman's meeting. Okay, the letters will be read at the selectman's meeting, but they will be read into the public So that's all I have. You need to have signed up if you'd like to speak. There is, in the back, you see the clipboard. You need to sign up if you'd like to speak. If, when your name is called, you've decided not to speak, just say so, and you have that required. But you will not be able to speak on this if you've not signed up ahead of time. If you speak, for example, if you're speaker number three, and then something comes up and you'd like to say, for the time, you'll go down to the bottom and speak after the last signed-up speaker speaks. So if there's fifteen speakers altogether, and you are number three, and you want to speak again, go in at slot number sixteen and speak. We're gonna limit people to two minutes of speaking. Steve will moderate, will keep track of that, just roughly. We're not putting a stopwatch on anybody, but try to try and keep things moving along. I would ask that, if you've spoken at previous meetings, you take that into consideration. We did listen to you, as I said earlier, at the previous meetings. We have learned a lot, always now, three meetings, and you're welcome to speak on anything you want related to this project, and keep in mind that we've heard a lot of support. Again, I'll just reiterate that if you have a question, we'll try to answer it. Either we will, or maybe Barbara will, as the treasurer. Mark is here? Yeah, I don't think so yet. We'll try, but if you sit here and say thank you at the end of your two minutes, that doesn't mean that we're not listening. It doesn't mean that we don't think what you said has some merit or importance. It just means we're moving on to the next person. Okay? Do you have anything you'd like to add to what I just said? Are there any questions as we begin, before I introduce the moderator?
I do have, actually, a question. Peter Jensen. You say that there will be a select board meeting after this meeting.
Right after this meeting.
What is the select board, then, going to decide?
I can't say we will, but my hope is that the select board will decide where this project will, how this project will move forward. It is now in the hands of the Board of Selectmen. That is per opinion put forward by our town attorney and by bond counsel, who wrote the bond resolution. That is, in their words, "Time for the Board of Selectmen to take ownership of this project." It is the way projects of this nature are supposed to proceed. Example, I served on the building committee for the firehouse. I served on the building committee for the school. Neither of those projects were done with the town voting on what, that the firehouse should be red, or the town voting that there should be a silo in front of Kent's side of the school that it should be blue, or that there will be a greenhouse attached to the back of the school. That was a decision that was made by a subcommittee that was appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen together made those decisions.
Right, but we were told by the select board that this would go to a vote on selection of the project, right?
You are correct, and that's not gonna happen, because it's not the way it works.
And why is that not going to happen?
Because that's not the way it works.
And who has suggested it's not the way it works?
I just told you who said that.
You said a town council?
Two attorneys.
Okay, so what does the town council or attorney say about the false premise of the initial referendum? Because that referendum was held under false premise.
The referendum was for the funding that is necessary to move forward with a project of this nature.
Right, which we were then told at that time that it was for funding, and then the town would be able to choose a selected solution.
You know what? You are correct, and I will tell you that we misspoke on that answer. You are correct, and I'm not disagreeing with you.
Right, so what I'm saying is then, if the town council has told you that that it was an incorrect thing, what then, how, let's say, if the referendum was held under a false premise, what is the validity of the referendum itself? Would that be now called into question? Can we go to the state, or whatever body?
We can go wherever.
And what would they say? What does the town attorney suggest on that?
The town attorney suggests exactly what I just said, that the Board of Selectmen, this was a quote, I'm not making up these words, that the Board of Selectmen needs to take, take ownership of this project. The town, the bond counsel, who wrote the resolution, said Kent is being overly democratic.
Okay. Now, what's the situation?
I'm not disagreeing with what you just said. Okay. Barbara, would you add anything to what Peter said, or what I just responded?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move ahead. Steve Penner has been a moderator now for us for two or three town meetings or hearings. He was the moderator for the last hearing on this topic. Most of you know him as a lifelong Kent resident and a very busy realtor here in town with a young family. So Steve, we thank you for being here tonight. Steve is the moderator, and he's gonna keep the meeting moving. He's not gonna, he can't broil the arguments or discussions, he's just the moderator. He's gonna take my spot here, and I'm gonna go back here. So Steve, welcome. Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you, Bruce. All right, who's ready for this? As Bruce said, there was a sign up sheet, it's in the back, if you're orange, since speaking, I advise you to sign up. We have, right now, roughly fifteen, eighteen people signed up to speak. So, without further ado, I'm gonna ask, first one up, Betty Crasney.
Hi, I've spoken on this several times before, so I'm going to put myself way around the list, please.
Okay. We'll move ahead to Ken Cooper. Ken, do you have any words you'd like to?
Sure. He's standing there?
Yeah.
So I am in favor of moving ahead on the project with the granite curbs and the concrete sidewalks, and I just wanted to express the reasons that I came to this decision. Number one, I think one of the most important investments that this community can make is an investment in our town center, which is critical to our community. It's most important for the viability of our commercial district, and it's also very important for attracting new families and new resources into this community. And for that reason, I think that the solution provides the best solution to support that. And I use three factors to kind of determine it: safety, aesthetics, and value. Safety, I think the case has already been made for safety under both solutions that are proposed in here, so I'm not gonna say anything more. But I think we need to go ahead with this project in one form or another for safety alone. Aesthetic value, I think it's clear if you go to communities with strong town centers that are attractive to people, that bring people, bring shoppers, and attract people to business community, having a granite and concrete sidewalks is superior. In terms of value, concrete and granite has a longer amortization period. Our debt service is down, and so the cost of this, we can afford and still have a reduction in debt and debt service. Interest costs are very low, and if we select a solution that defers some of the cost into the future, it can end up costing significantly more, because as interest rates, which will rise at some point in the future, increase, and we make the decision to make the capital investment then, it becomes much more expensive. So for those principal reasons, I hope the Board of Selectmen will consider that solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Thanks, Ben. Next up, we have John Slowick.
Ask me, but I'm gonna wait till the end of the meeting.
John, sorry. Okay. Alan Prillo. Alan, speak.
Thanks, Steve. I'm Alan Prillo, I'm in Cary, Rhode Island, Kent. I have no expertise in this area, and don't pretend to, but ever since we've even talked about the sidewalks for Kent, and debate between concrete or asphalt, I've made a point of looking at sidewalk arrangements in other towns and in cities, and particularly in New York City. And one of the things I've noticed, that in New York City, there is not one single asphalt sidewalk that I've ever discovered. And I've also been looking at the sidewalks in New York City that I'm familiar with on a long-term basis, and I've never seen them giving out. They last. So my opinion is that if you had concrete or granite, because of the long, it may be more expensive to begin with, but in the long run, it will save us a lot of money. Thank you.
Next up. Dan Cherry is up next.
I just wanna add to that, that I grew up in a small town in Massachusetts, not a lot of love driven us, and we had concrete and granite sidewalks for many, many years. They're still there, still durable, and for the sake of longevity, and also because so much of the debt service is being retired in the next year or two, I think it's a very reasonable decision for the town. I hope it will be passed.
Hedy Kennedy. Hedy, do you wanna speak at this point?
I don't.
No, you can go later. All right, Catherine Backrack, please.
Catherine Backrack. I was a member of the dissolved committee, so I guess I'm a dissolved person. And I took my way onto that committee because I had had extensive paid and volunteer experience with seniors, and was very, very concerned about the dangerous condition of the Kent sidewalks and the trip hazards everywhere. I also felt that it was important for a little bit of representation from the female community in Kent, of which there was none, and Hedy later joined us. As you look at the timeline, it looks like a very long time, and it certainly felt like a very long time to those of us who were on the committee, but one of the reasons is that we were going through some pretty difficult economic times nationally, and there just weren't any grants available. And a lot of us on the committee, at various points, looked at each other and said, "Do we wanna continue with this? It's been a long time." And we sort of made promises to each other that we would continue until we could access some grants, and that finally happened, and we felt like we could go on with these proposals. A little bit of historical context. Those of you who've been here for a long time probably remember that it's always been very difficult for Kent to make decisions about infrastructure. The sewers were a major issue. My father and Pat Redman's father poured red dye into John Green's toilet, so that they could make a point that the sewage was going directly into the room, and it took a long time after that to get the sewer going. I have in my pocket a page from the GTD that I'm going to give to my friend John Johnson afterwards, because it describes a zoning meeting in Kent, at which about one hundred and fifty people attended, and half of those people stormed out of the meeting, halfway through the meeting before vote was taken. Templeton Farm, when the town was asked to approve the gift, or for a dollar of the property, to Kent Village House and to the elderly, there were hugely contentious meetings, and the vote was ninety to ninety-seven. And when I said that to people afterwards, they said, "What was that all about?" So we have trouble making these decisions. But I think the time has come for us to move forward, to get this done. I've read Lynn's articles, and for the minutes, cut most of them out. I try to put myself in the place of someone who works at the DOT, and sort of get into their head, and I'm thinking, they're thinking, "What is going on in Kent? And why are they having such difficulty moving this project forward?" So I think it's time to do it. Other people have expressed their opinions about materials. I walk in town a lot. I look at the sidewalks on the side of the railroad station that are concrete, and have been there for probably fifty or sixty years, and have not a crack on them. The other day, I walked up the sidewalk along South Common Road, which was built probably thirteen years ago, was asphalt, it's full of cracks. So I think we have some very clear examples of what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on our list is your husband, Bill Backrack. They must've come together.
Actually, two persons. Sorry, I'm scared for the news.
Bill Backrack. Hearing the discussion tonight, came prepared to support the project with the granite curbs and the concrete sidewalks, and I find these two pieces of paper particularly helpful. Sometimes when you get a project like this, well, in Kent, as my wife pointed out, delays are common, but sometimes the delays work to your advantage. And if we look, if we look at this page here, on the white page, with the six figures in it, it's to the advantage of having this vote tonight, because there clearly, with the debt, that debt's going away, there's clearly an opportunity to pay with a full package. And on the blue sheet, at the bottom, bottom of the page, total project, three million six hundred forty-eight thousand dollars, if you subtract the state's contribution to that, we are well within the vote, however misleading it was back in the spring, we are well within limits to have the concrete sidewalks and go forward for that.
Thank you, Bill. We're gonna move on to Matthew Starr, next on our list.
Thank you. First off, I am shocked as well about there not being a vote by the public. I went back and re-watched the YouTube videos to make sure that I didn't get the wrong message when I was at the referendum. And it was very clear that we were gonna have a vote, and it's very disturbing that, regardless who the council or bond counsel says, "I don't think you can promise the taxpayers a vote," and take it away. You can still give them a vote, nobody's stopping. There's not a diagram or picture of this project, but I do have some concerns, and I've expressed these before. The Lane Street sidewalks, or lack of sidewalks, the Elizabeth Street sidewalks are not included in this project, so instead it's all inclusive, it's really not. The sidewalks that go down to our center school aren't included. The crosswalks are clearly a problem in Kent. I'm sure everybody else notices it. The signs can't be put right at the crosswalks because of intersections of driveways. I hope that's been taken into consideration of moving those, so that they can be put in the proper spot, so you're not twelve, fourteen feet away from the actual crosswalk, or somebody needs to cross, and possibly adding a crosswalk, where all the activity happens down by the gift hards and down towards the light. The other thing to consider, should the church parking on Bridge Street? Once you put granite curbing in there, it's gonna be very difficult for people to park, as they do now on both sides of the curbing. What else do I have here? The light, traffic light control box, Bruce, I've brought this to your attention for years now. I don't know why we would put a sidewalk around, there's a traffic control box that takes up two-thirds of the sidewalk. It really should be moved. It used to be in the grassy area of the Paddle, and was moved by the state of connecting into the sidewalk area. So it really should be moved out of there, and redo the sidewalks. The other thing is the telephone poles, the sign poles. Fifty-five years I've been in Kent, those are one of the biggest hazards on sidewalks. There's sign poles, telephone poles, guide wires, those are true hazards. The last thing to consider, and maybe this is in the plan, we just don't know about it, there's only one handicap spot on Main Street. And maybe there's plans to put another one in somewhere else, but really, there's one handicap spot right next to a fire hydrant, that's the only one you can find in Kent. We really should be addressing that. The state would a lot of money into putting new abrins in for handicap access at all the intersections. It doesn't make much sense if there's only one handicap spot in the whole town. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Next up, Peter Jensen.
Yep, Peter Jensen. I'm certainly in favor of improving sidewalks. I mean, they're a hazard out here, there's no doubt about it. I kinda have a question, why have they have been kind of neglected for so long? I'm very dismayed, though, about this issue of not going to a vote of the people, and this is what we are, this is the plan, that we're all considering right now? This is the plan? I don't see, and this gentleman here raised a whole bunch of issues. There's no plan, there's no plan. This is just a piece of paper. So I don't really know even how to address some of these issues. Seems to me that it's ludicrous, no disrespect to anybody, but it's ludicrous to suggest that, you know, somebody, some other towns or some other city's experience with sidewalks and curbs should be transferred here to our small old town in Kent, which never had sidewalks and curbs like what those other towns may have had, what those other cities may have had. And so it's very hard to even understand what a plan might be here. Is there a mix and match, perhaps? So concrete and granite, part one? Part two might be granite, or let's say asphalt and asphalt, or asphalt and granite? Is that a possibility to mix and match this thing? Because that makes a huge difference, especially when you consider there's a twenty percent contingency and a fifteen percent overhead for the engineer. So I don't really know what the plan is here. I mean, I certainly am in favor of improving sidewalks, but this is shocking that this is what's presented to the town.
Peter? Next up, it's hard for me to read, but I think it says Amy McAndrew, is she here? No? Oh, there she is. Good to see you.
Hi, Amy McAndrew. Basically, I'm agreeing with Matt and Peter Jensen, just, I don't think that this is a comprehensive plan, and I do wanna ask a question, is from the, is the plan to go from the monument all the way down to the greenhouse? Is that what the plan is?
That's to be determined when this meeting is over.
Well, actually...
The recommendation?
The recommendation was that to go to what was known as Wasabi, the restaurant there, and not to the greenhouse. However, what was specked out in what Barbara presented to us, it actually said to the Kent Greenhouse. So there is a little bit of confusion there as to what those numbers are.
So it is?
The recommendation of Streetscape Committee Two was from the monument to the last gravel driveway above the Kent Greenhouse, which is the end of, there is a little, a little bit of a sidewalk that continues from where John Griesen is now, where Wasabi was, there is, hard to find, but there is the remains of the sidewalk, so it continued down, down that to the driveway that is just before the main entrance to the Kent Greenhouse. That's the recommendation of Streetscape Committee Two.
Because I do think it should go all the way down to the greenhouses. That's all.
That's it? Dan? Speaking of the greenhouse, we've got Bruce Penner next.
Hi.
Hi.
First of all, I really would encourage the town to move forward with this improvement for a whole lot of reasons. This kind of improvement... This kind of improvement in the town not only lifts the visual effect of the town, but it does help the merchants of the town. I also have a residence in Cornwall, and we've been dealing with an issue with West Cornwall, where because of limitations, we can't develop our business district, people who want to come in and start businesses, and they can't do it. And one of the reasons are, you don't have sidewalks, we don't have anywhere to park, it's a real deficit. And as a result of that, it's very difficult for the town to be able to bring in younger people, older people, entrepreneurs and whatnot to invest. Secondly, like you talk about the Green House, we're kind of left out in the middle of nowhere down there. There's no participation, when flags are put up, we don't get them. In fact, I think I talked to Bruce about it, I actually pay for the lights that light the sidewalk going down to the bottom of the hill there. I've been paying for it for four or five years. It's been a pretty big expense when I added it all in. So I'd really like not only a sidewalk in the Green House, but I'd also like some lighting for there, not only for that particular sidewalk, or the one going down to the forty thousand as well. There was some mention about not wanting to increase taxes, I get that, nobody wants to pay any more taxes. But I have to tell people that business people pay more taxes than the normal resident. I pay not only property taxes, and not only the taxes on my licensed vehicles, but I pay taxes on every computer and every desk I have in place, and I pay taxes on every piece of equipment that I have that is a nuisance. So my tax burden to the town of Kent is much greater than, and every business person's tax burden to the town of Kent. So we do deserve a little bit of consideration when people are talking about developing the town center, beyond the fact that it's just a general improvement for people. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. We're on to John Johnson.
Thank you, Steve. A lot of territory to cover. First of all, to me, this project, there are too many reasons for doing this, are safety, and to me, the business community, the health of the business community. I think safety will be taken care of. From being on P and Z so many years and a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I firmly believe that the business community, the health of the business community is less fortuitous than we realize. And I think we need to do things, whatever we can, to solidify the economic base and the business base of our community. Building on what Alan said, as I became a member of the first Streetscape Committee, I started looking at sidewalks in other towns. And you begin to realize that each town, each neighborhood presents a character. It's not necessarily something you're conscious of, but either it's a unifying, satisfying look, or some are disjointed and unsettling. Kent right now has a unifying look. It's old, worn-out, sad, asphalt. But it is consistent, and that's important. It's not necessarily attractive, but it is consistent throughout the building center. I think it's incredibly important that the new project, whatever is done, decided on, the whole thing be done, and it be done consistently. Not concrete sidewalks in one place, switching to asphalt in another place. Whether you think asphalt is better than concrete or vice versa, switching makes people think that you had a different value judgment on one street, you know, on one segment rather than the other. Consistency is really important. There are a lot of different ways to look at the numbers, and it's possible to say that asphalt is actually cheaper per year, cheaper per foot, well, certainly cheaper per foot, but cheaper over time than concrete. If cost was the only consideration, that would be really important. The cost isn't. When we, if cost was the only thing that mattered, we'd all be driving the little three-wheel smart cars and sign-on XVs. But there are other considerations beyond that. Besides, you know, they're dependable economical vehicles, but you need a larger vehicle for family, you need vehicles for work, they're different, and some of it comes down to appearance. None of us are going to spend twenty-three, forty thousand dollars for a new car to behave the looks of it, right? Vanity is bad, appearance is good, or is important. When you go to a job interview, if appearance is important, if you're trying to sell a house to a family in Kent, the appearance of Kent is important. If you're trying to bring a new business in to Kent, the appearance of the building center of Kent is very important. So I think it's really important to do the whole project and be consistent about it. It's quite possible to write for engineers and attorneys to write documents, so that if another grant comes along quickly, we can break one part off. There are ways to handle some of those things, but I wouldn't want to wait another year, two years, have to have another committee, more town meetings, and try to come up with more funding, because we broke it up into several pieces. Matt, yes? A lot of those details have to be discussed in the committees, it's sort of a horse and a cart thing. You've got to spend a lot of money with the engineers to get those things down on paper. Church parking, rounded curbs can be put in to allow that still. There's been some objection to that through the Board of Selectmen, that there's a liability involved in letting that continue. I'm in favor, but a lot of those things will be handled as the process goes out, but it involves beginning to spend money with engineers and establish a building committee that's going to make decisions.
Thank you, John. Next up is Marty Lindemeyer.
Yeah, I'm not going to take too much of your time, but just want to echo what Adam said. You know, as you've said, here in Chicago, as you've said before, this is a trustee who owns your church, and the concern again is the parking for our elderly parishioners that commute, some of your parishioners, and also with the St. Andrews, I have to speak for them, but again, the same thing on a Sunday morning or a special event or, let's just say, a holy day obligation for Catholics, not having that capability to park, you have very limited parking space because of the church's parking limitations, that's going to be a big effect. If you're looking to outsource or to, Bruce said, and so on, enhance the ability of Kent to reach out to others, you need to have a both social and religious and educational ability to support that. Well, especially I have the chair of the school board, again, and John mentioned that, we don't want to have dual sidewalks in the zone, we have concrete, we have asphalt, we have that now. We have that on Giant Avenue, we have that on Meadow Street, we have that on Elizabeth Street, south of Bridge Street. It's continuing that way. There is broken curb from that asphalt, spent it for two years, I wasn't picked it up, or even fixed any of that. Kids walk across that every day, I'm on it with my daughters, and look at the two-hundred-and-so kids that we have walking through there, and for emergency evacuation drills and so on, we need to have those sidewalks available to us. We do occasionally have children that need, special needs ability to move in and out of that area, we have no capabilities for that, of the current structure and improvements proposed in the Streetscape. So not looking at your educational process for safety and security as Kent run, I think it's a little short-sighted. I certainly would love to support from you all to go back and reevaluate that, to add that in there, to at least have the Elizabeth Street to the school, to Giant Avenue, and the school system to look at for approved concrete sidewalks. Now, if you remember, a couple of years ago, when we did the budget, the school board we put together a proposal to upgrade and complete and fix our sidewalks and our parking lots of school, it's in the capital plan, but it's in under an asphalt repair. So in a couple of years, we're going to be putting new asphalt in, at least that's the current plan. My plan now is to go back and, as the Board of Finance did at the last meeting, they stood up as one, and you answered, we said, we want the concrete and cement sidewalk program, that's what we want. So I'm going to go back and reopen our capital plan, as you say, we need to have that then in any new construction, an update construction for the parking lots and sidewalks where our children can fit their school. So I'll go again, and we'll support that as we go forward. Probably going to cost a little bit more, a little bit anticipated, but if we're going to do this, that's a great way to do it, maybe start one in and have a town center and bring it together. We did, I think so. So thank you for your time today.
Next up, we have Mike Al.
Mike Al. I might as well wait to speak as fast as I can, Marty, there. I've already run out of half of it. I just want to say, first of all, that this, you're doing a kind of deep injustice, but not letting us go to vote. I was on second committee, we all thought it was going to be a vote, and we suggested it, and it was a vote. And if there's no law saying that you can't, then why not do the right thing and let the people choose? Secondly, we talked, you know, I went to the committee, three reasons, new sidewalks for safety, the next thing to me was cost, and the third thing was aesthetics. Okay, safety. Concrete cracks, everybody knows that. I know it especially because I worked with concrete for thirty years. Every single concrete sidewalk you see has a patrol joint every sixteen to twenty feet or even twelve feet, and it has a control cut every four to five feet. Those cracks in those control joints are not safe. Concrete freezes faster, it thaws slower, it's very slippery when it's cold out, it's very slippery most of the time. Our own John Missy, who plows the sidewalks, says it's much easier for him to keep the blacktop clear than it is the concrete. I've recently seen pictures of a town that did put a blacktop in granite, and I think it has a much softer look than the concrete. I think concrete is a, we're not a city, we're a small village. Why do we have to look like a city? Why do we have to keep up with the Joneses? I don't think that's, it just doesn't make sense to me. I agree the sidewalk should go in the Green House. No problem, no, they are a business, they've been, they're one of the oldest businesses in town, and I agree it should go down there. I'm not so sure about the lighting, but we're not, we're not lighting on any of the other side. So it's not, I wouldn't suggest, wouldn't light there because of not doing anything else. So I, of course, John mentioned that somebody's going to tell you the cost per year, well, that somebody came because he was looking at me. Concrete, we were told by the town's engineer that has an average lifespan of thirty years. The same guy said blacktop has an average lifespan of twenty years. In these numbers that you all have been provided, you weren't provided with those numbers, well, cost per year for concrete is about, give or take, fourteen thousand, six hundred a year. Cost per year for blacktop, give or take, is about eighty-six hundred a year. Seventy percent difference. Cost has to be taken into consideration. Just because money was appropriated for the whole project, which, okay, we could do the whole project, but I prefer phases, but why do we have to spend all of it, or most of all? The blacktop is just as good a product, and the lifespan is longer than most people think. We, the committee suggested, or took out the area of sidewalk that goes from the north end of the street up to the community house. That's a blacktop sidewalk. Don't know if you've ever seen it, but the reason we took it out is because it's still in great shit. I talked to the guy that had, nobody could tell me when it was done. I actually talked to one of the guys that put that blacktop down, he said thirteen or fifteen, thirteen to fifteen years ago. There's not a crack in it. If you add a copper base for either one, they're both great products, they're both going to last. You know, I've been there for fifteen years, and I've talked to many, many people who've come to the town, they just come to this town because it's a quaint little town, they visit, they like the stores. I actually ask them if the sidewalks bring anything to them. They don't come here to see our sidewalks, they come here to see the businesses and to see the quaint town. They like, they like the view, they like the parks, they like the change of scenery every, during the seasons. It's not, they don't care, they can come here, it was dirt. But I just want you to consider two things. Blacktop is a safe, in my mind, as someone who does this for a living, blacktop is the safer of the two, and the less costly of the two over time, especially, even though people have been told otherwise, but when you put the numbers together, which I actually have with another member of that committee, the blacktop is much more efficient.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Austin Brown signed up to speak?
The reason I'm standing up is because I haven't been at any of the other meetings, and I honestly don't know any of the history. But I do have a question, which is, do we really need curbs? I'm sure that there have been a lot of people studying this, but it seems to me that curbs are a problem for snow plowing, and maybe we can, there are places we don't want curbs, or as, I didn't realize that there was a round curb, various, but why, why are we going with curbs? It's, I think it's a problem. And I see problems with it, but I'm sure there's an answer. Does anybody know? It protects the edge of the sidewalk. Is there something, some other way, or is it asphalt or granite, or is it a sidewalk?
Okay. So I have no one else signed up at this moment, so I'm going to go back to the list if there's people that want to speak at this point. Betty?
Yes, I'm very proud. Since nineteen seventy-two. First of all, the committee that was first formed to bring into this, worked for many years, almost ten years, and went to every single local town, they didn't go to New York City, they went to all the local towns in the northwest corner. And they sold up work and what endured. Second of all, to address the curb problem, I don't know how many of you have parked and gotten out of your car and saw that you were someplace in no man's land, because there was no curb, and you were parked on what was supposed to be a sidewalk. That is not a safe situation, it's not a safe situation for the people walking, and it's not a safe situation for the people trying to cross the streets. Third of all, I find it incomprehensible that we would gather a group of people and have them work for all those years to come back with all the information and make sensible recommendations based on what they surveyed in the northwest corner, and then totally disregard it and have meeting after meeting in which we discuss the same thing over and over again. And we always come to the same conclusion that we want something attractive, enduring, and safe, and we know what that is. It's concrete and granite. So I think we've been through this enough, it's time for the Board of Selectmen to make the decision and to go forward and do it before we lose any more of the money button. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. John Sloick?
Yeah, John Sloick.
Sloick, is the pronunciation correct?
Yeah, I'm from far away in South Kent.
Okay.
I'd like to just play what Betty said over again, for the entire group. My notes are, first of all, you know, I haven't been to the other meetings as well, I don't have the history, but on the other hand, you know, the town needs to be updated, it looks pretty shabby, and asphalt gives it a very shabby look, so I'm very much in favor of the concrete granite. But with those curbs, I think, curbs are important, which you said, my curbs, I always thought was dangerous the way people parked around the churches, but all the people smartened me, sorted that out. I also think, like Betty, one of my other notes was that, you know, it's, you can't really allow people managing a project, no business will run itself that way. And so I'm prepared and comfortable delegating it to the selectmen and then to the people that they delegate to run the project. If they want to have meetings once in a while to tell us how it's going, then it's great, or look for more, but if they get a problem, for the most part, I'm prepared to delegate because that's how we have to do things in our organizations in complex situations. And I think it's important that we invest in the town, which everyone's kind of raised up as well, so I don't have to go over that again. And it looks like the project's actually paid for, we can actually afford the full load of this project, so I don't think we have to worry about that either. So I'm much in favor of going forward, we can vote to get it going.
Good job. Thanks, John. Uh, Hedy King, you've written your name, do you want to speak at this moment?
I was on the dissolve committee with Catherine, and we've worked a lot with it. And one of our biggest concerns was safety and making sure that everyone, whether they were a resident or a visitor to town, had safety on, um, our streets. I know that there's concern about the concrete and that, but the town of here was built in nineteen eighty-nine, and we've got concrete out here. And it's lasted for many, many years, definitely doesn't have the, um, usage that Main Street would, but if it's lasted this long and it looks this good, it has to stay some time.
Thank you, Senator. At this point, that's everyone I have on the list. Is there anyone else that would, at this point, I need to, any follow-ups? Sam?
I would just urge the selectmen or the committee that is working on the eventual plan to make sure that they consider possible addition in the future of fiber optic or power telephone or whatever needs to be put in a conduit under the sidewalks because once concrete or asphalt is put down, we are never going to open up the sidewalks again. And add that at a later date, it'll just be much more expensive than it would be to plan ahead. So hopefully that will be part of the proposal.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mike? Two minutes.
Sorry, Gavin. Do you look right out here when the concrete gets fired up? There's a crack about that wide and it shifted about half inch. If you look out front, there's, there's a crack in the sidewalk that's isn't as, that's, isn't spread as much, but it shifted at least three eighths of an inch. Concrete, cracks in concrete shifts just like anything else. The concrete's natureless, it cracks, whereas blacktop's natureless, stretch and flex a little bit better.
Okay. Betty?
You bring that up, it's forty years, just forty years of this concrete sidewalk. So like a few things going on with it, it's not so bad.
Well, at this point, without any further discussion, I would move to adjourn the public hearing.
So the question is, do we want to speak to anything specific? I actually have a question that Mike, Mike might be able to answer, uh, because I'm not gonna be with it. It seems to me that all material breaks, no matter what you use, it just always breaks. Is the issue that we have not been keeping up with whatever material we have there that is the underlying problem? Or is it that just one product is better than the other? And I know it's only your estimation, but I'm trying to get an understanding is, if we had fixed that crack out there a year ago, a concrete, you know, did, poured another crack, we'd still get a ton of life out of that, wouldn't you not?
Yes. Either way, they're both, as I said before, they're both excellent products. I think either one is better than the other. I think that most of the problems with our sidewalks that have gone bad is the base. I think that, um, they, they were not based properly. Some of the sidewalks that are currently in place have were put on top of bad sidewalks, and the cracks from the bad sidewalks is all true whether you do blacktop or whether you do concrete. The, the issue is doing it correctly and doing it right the first time. And, you know, and of course, you know, like I said, it is a safety thing and I mean, all for it. I'm a businessman intent also, but they don't have any effect on my business. And I'm here, you know, of a proponent of getting the job done, but I'd like to see it done or work away. And no, the funds, it is not paid for. The town is borrowing almost three million dollars from this. So it's not paid for yet. It's got, uh, it's supposed to be paid for over, I think, thirty years. And over thirty years, even though it's a pretty reasonable interest rate, my understanding is that three million is gonna be close to five, uh, not totally sure. But however you decide to do this, the basis, how it's done is, is more important than what you use.
Can I, can I, can I answer that question too? Um, the, the specifications in the, in the construction documents are really important in terms, I don't know how thick these concrete curbs are, you're talking about, and maybe, maybe you've got a three, if you're talking about asphalt, you've got a three inches of base course, a two inch topping course. Um, with the concrete, are we comparing, um, a four inch concrete slab to a five inch asphalt, um, verge from the costing standpoint? If you're gonna pour concrete, you really wanna do it, as Mike said, you really have to do it right. You have to get the base right, you have to make sure that, that the concrete is thick enough, you have to make sure that the distance between the, the control joints and the construction joints are, are not too far so that the concrete, if you've got a twenty foot slab, um, that's four feet wide and it's not based properly, it's going to crack, whereas if you've got a, a, a four foot section of concrete, that's four foot wide, that's gonna be able to move someone independently, it's gonna be less susceptible to cracking. So you have to be really careful with the specifications.
Matt Winter. You want to thank him, Matt? Yes?
Yeah, Peter Jensen. I just heard Mike Winter say that we're gonna be paying for this for thirty years. Did I not, did we not hear before on the referendum that we were gonna be able to borrow for like ten years and that was it?
Nothing's been decided on that.
Okay, nothing.
Highly unlikely to be third, but nothing's been decided.
Because, I mean, what Mike says is absolutely correct.
Well, it looks like, it looks like the paper that was handed out anticipates forty years.
That's a forty year deal, huh?
Oh, no, no.
Well, what's it say for the remaining thirty years?
That's Maple Street extension. That's our current, that's our. That's our current debt.
It's not for this project.
Okay.
All right, just a few more guys, Austin?
So I'm a little confused. What, I missed the very beginning of this, so I put out the knocking number vote. What would we be voting on today if we were voted? To either the other or me or you?
If I could try to answer this just really briefly, I think the problem is to get something that someone can visually look at and vote on requires a lot of capital to be spent by the town, probably engineers, surveyors go out and, and, and to put plans together. And so at this point, there's nothing really to vote on, um, other than do we want to go in this direction or do we wanna go in this direction? And that's kind of what this public hearing is about. And at that point, we're gonna be directing, this is supposed to be directing the selectmen to decide which direction they wanna go with this project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just, you know, it costs about a thousand fifteen, hundred dollars for a referendum.
Selectmen, do we need anything else here? All right. All right, at this point, I'm gonna move to adjourn the meeting, the public hearing. Thank you, Senator.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the selections meeting will begin in a few minutes, once we are fully staffed here. You're welcome to stay. First thing I'll be doing is reading a few letters that have been received.
Can you move that one? Can you move the microphone closer to them? Can you move the closer to them? Can you take the microphone closer to you? Can you take the microphone and put it in the center of the table, please?
And we're gonna begin our meeting, uh, we're gonna continue talking, please go out in the hall. Otherwise, this is a, is a regularly worn, special board of selectmen meeting. I'd like to start the meeting, uh, just remind people that since this is a special meeting, we're on one topic and one topic only. We won't, we won't be taking public communications, that's what we just did. We are here to discuss what we learned, uh, and to discuss the contents of a few letters that I'd like to read into the record that received, were received over the past week. The first one dated October seventeen, two thousand nineteen. Dear Board of Selectmen, the Kent Board of Finance at its October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen monthly meeting unanimously approved the following motion. Send a letter to the Board of Selectmen stating that the Board of Finance supports completing the proposed Streetscape project in one phase with concrete sidewalks and granite curbing as a prudent investment in infrastructure. Signed, Mark Sabetic, Chairman. The second one is written by Alyssa Potts, owner of the Fife and Drum Restaurant. Dear Selectmen, it is my hope the Board of Selectmen will follow the recommendation of the original Streetscape Committee, the one that worked on this project for ten years and did all the heavy lifting. Their research was completed with assistance from people who knew what they were talking about and their opinions were formed without bias and over a long period of time. There was no get this done right away at the lowest cost mandate. There was a do it right mandate. I heard the second Streetscape Committee member say their goals were safety, lowest cost, and aesthetics. The published goals of the first Streetscape Committee were safety, value, and aesthetics. There's a big difference. Concrete is lower maintenance, lasts longer, and looks better. It provides the best long-term value to the money. I have attached the Malone and McBroom survey summary of the pros and cons of using concrete and asphalt. The Malone and McBroom analysis runs contrary to the disinformation currently being circulated as Malone and McBroom's recommendation. Why else would all Connecticut towns and communities across the country use concrete instead of asphalt? Despite the initial browbeating and intimidation of one person who is a proponent of asphalt, I am told that even the second committee recommended concrete for the sidewalks. This isn't just my opinion, all the people that I've spoken to want concrete sidewalks, not the lower grade asphalt. Please don't sell the town short. Kent can afford this project, particularly in light of the retirement of the firehouse and school improvement debt. Build it all now and build something that everyone can be proud of and leave a legacy of a caring community, not a community of cheap states. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Alyssa Potts. The third one is from Tim Good, President of the Kent Chamber of Commerce. He writes, Dear Selectmen, Kent has always prided itself in the way it presents the town to visitors and tourists who choose to come and experience our northwest gem. As well as continuing to offer a great small business community, the great events throughout the year, the chamber also looks to the well-being and economic development of the town, both short term and long term, and the way that it benefits all members of the community as well as all business owners who rely on continued growth. Therefore, it is important to recognize that the Kent Chamber of Commerce and its members are behind the Streetscape improvements that have been recommended by the Streetscape Committee, including the implementation of concrete sidewalks. Not only do we see this as a need to improve the town's aesthetic and therefore experience residents and visitors alike, but also for making for safer environment for pedestrians in all seasons. Thank you for your attention to this crucial issue. Sincerely, Tim Good, President, Kent Chamber of Commerce. Another one from Tim Good as an individual business owner. Dear Selectmen, it is crucial to make sure that Kent presents itself at its best in any season for residents and visitors alike, and therefore request that all sidewalks throughout Kent Center are created in concrete. These sidewalks should be concrete in each direction, including Route Seven, north to the community house on the east side, Route Seven south to Commons on the east side, and the west side to include the current concrete paving just past the premises of the John Leeson property. West on three forty-one, south side to the Sacred Heart Church, and on the north side to the parish house at St. Andrews. Also, three forty-one east to the firehouse on both sides. As a business owner on one of the considered routes, it's crucial for my business and, and that visitors will be enticed along good quality and safe concrete pavements to visit all extremities to all businesses. Thank you for consideration, Tim Good, the Good Gallery. Uh, and the last one is, uh, an email from Natalie Randall, uh, owner of Artefacts. Uh, she writes, I would like to emphasis, emphasize the importance of continuing the concrete sidewalk on the east side of Route Seven from South Commons to across from the Congregational Church, and on the west side from the Congregational Church to Wasabi Restaurant, former site of. The area south of the monument is the southern gateway to town and continuity is important. Concrete should be used to the east and west as well. As many are unaware, the sidewalk originally ran past Wasabi Restaurant to the Kent Greenhouse employee parking lot driveway, but the maintenance on the stretch in front of Wasabi has long been abandoned. The path has sunk into the point of being a deep gully. The concrete is broken and it's a puddle full of leaves most of the time. It has become a hazard. The town is liable if anyone gets injured here. I'd like to see filling and resurfacing thi- this area as part of the plan so that one can walk or take a wagon all the way to the Kent Greenhouse. Currently, the old Zepa building, that's the one right in front of what was Wasabi, owned presently by Carly Rockevansky, is under construction. No one, one never knows what the building might be in the near and distant future. If there's no walking access to town from there, it will limit or deter potential businesses. Visitors will not venture past the end of the sidewalk. Thank you for, for your considerations. Signed, Nat- Natalie Randall, Artefacts Designs and Industries. Thank you to all. Okay. Do you, do you have a, uh, I do, if you don't, so.
Go ahead.
Okay. I would like to make a motion. And it reads as follows. It's modeled for the most part after the recommendation of Streetscape Committee One. After careful consideration, several plan options over a period of eight years with guidance from our engineering firm of Malone and McBroom, with public input from interested townspeople, and after six public hearings, I move a two-phase plan for the complete renovation of the sidewalks in the Village Center. This motion is based primarily on two criteria. One, the plan provides the best long-term safety and economic value to Kent and its citizens. And two, the project will be substantially uniforming construction and materials throughout the Route Seven and Route three forty-one portions of the project. Phase one, Route Seven, west side, from just above the Kent Greenhouse, end of existing sidewalk, to the Fife and Drum Restaurant. East side, from South Commons to the existing sidewalk opposite the community house. Route three forty-one, south side, from the Husaton River Bridge to the driveway at the firehouse. North side, from the crosswalks at Elizabeth Street to Maple Street Extension. Included, building materials for phase one, Route Seven, three forty-one would be concrete sidewalks and granite curbing, alternate line items could be included for bid pricing. Two addition, two, two additional crosswalks in the vicinity of the House of Books and in the vicinity of the Fife and Drum Restaurant. And three, provisions for conduit for street lamps. Twenty-four are recommended, but not included in the project, but conduits for future, for wiring, for future possibilities and possible future needs. Elizabeth Street from three forty-one to Kent Center School. Necessary repairs and upgrades should be made as determined through discussions with the Kent Center. the Kent Center School Administration and PTO and appropriate entities. Phase one should be sent immediately to Kent Malone and McBroom for the design of a formal plan and creation of a bid package. And phase two, Elizabeth and Lane Street, mentioned earlier, after commencement of phase one, Selectmen would form a new committee to investigate existing Streetscape condition and propose possible remedies for these streets or addition of sidewalks where there are none. That, as I stated at the beginning, is a motion.
One second.
There's a second, so we're in discussion at this time.
I have a question.
Okay.
Who wrote this?
This was written probably ninety percent by... What did you think I wrote it? It's written ninety percent by the Streetscape Committee One. I adjusted it to make it more suitable for what it is being used for. I did not write it.
I wanted to know.
Okay. Probably, I don't know.
Well, Streetscape Committee One. Source is the point. I'd like to address this issue of our assurance that we were going to provide a referendum to the people. I heard several people rather significantly upset that we did not actually bring it to a vote. I think you made it clear that we promised that and did not deliver it.
All three missed it.
All three. Wait, I said we. That we promised and did not deliver. Now, it was based on your conversations with the lawyers and Bob Bond Counsel.
The change of plans is based on?
The determination that the Board of Selectmen should own this and just take it and not put it to the people for a vote. Now, I don't know if Chris was at that meeting, but I wasn't. I assume he wasn't because it would have been a Selectmen's meeting.
No, the meeting was a phone conference call with...
Okay. Was it their advice that we couldn't, should not proceed because it could not be done effectively? Or did they just want to take a shortcut and say, "You're Selectmen, you handle it"? Good question.
If you recall, at a meeting that the three of us had, we... Chris, you recognize, Chris sketched out a, just a sketch, a rudimentary sketch of a proposed referendum question. There was some question from some people as to whether this was a proper referendum question. So we contacted...
It's my first one.
Oh, I'm not criticizing. I wouldn't have done it better, Chris, believe me. So we contacted town attorney, and he responded by the following. In response to Bruce's request, I have reviewed the circumstances surrounding the proposed referendum pertaining to the Streetscape project. I examined the text of the May Board of Selectmen Board of Finance resolution and the results of the referendum confirming and approving the resolution appropriating $2.925 million and authorizing bonding for that sum and for the specific project. The issue is whether the proposed November referendum questions may be worded such that design and construction options, different from and inconsistent with those already adopted, may overrule a lawful and current legislative mandate involving bonding that is reliant on the approved design. Finally, the answer is no. Unless the resolution is expressly rescinded by another vote of the legislative body, the question posed concerning parsing the project and/or modifying its scope or design would not be proper as required by Connecticut General Statute 7-1, in my opinion. The resolution is impeccably detailed, not this, the...
I got it.
The resolution, as written by Bond Counsel, is impeccably detailed and specifically and expressly approved by the legislative body voting on the likewise well-drafted referendum questions. The resolution is drawn such that it cites the Malone and McBroom Plan of July 19, 2018, and calls for the improvements, quote, "as determined and implemented by the Board of Selectmen from time to time, including sidewalk curbing and road repair." That is what the voters adopted and ordered. Moreover, it is unlikely that the questions would be phrased to provide the voters with adequate information describing the modifications with the same detail as the resolution. I hope this is helpful. Very truly, your dear Randall DeBella, Kent Town Attorney. Does that help?
It helps in terms of the chronology, but I don't see that that prohibits us from having a referendum. The resolution that was voted on indicated acceptance of the plan, where clearly the implementation of the plan is up to the Board of Selectmen. The resolution that was voted on did not provide for a specific construction method, details, or definition of the scope of the project. So I still feel that the scope of the project is up to us, and we did tell the townspeople that they would have an opportunity to vote, to cast a affirmative or negative vote on the aspects of the project. I think we walked away from that. I feel terrible about it, and I would like to reconsider whether we can put it to a referendum. Part of the question, or part of the issues raised by the lawyer was that, I guess we showed them that, and it was maybe a little confusing. Maybe that doesn't comply with some referendum legalities, but it would have been helpful to pay and say, "Here's another possibility to get, to get a referendum out that does
If I may, just to also summarize, the Bond Counsel, who wrote this document, and our conference call with him, this too was in a conference call, and he says, "By virtue of the currently approved funding resolution, the Board of Selectmen is the responsible entity and must make the final decisions for the Streetscape project, including but not limited to design, scope of the project, location, and materials. The taxpayers have approved the project within the authority of the full resolution, which was passed by referendum vote. The funding resolution authorized the expenditure of $3,925,000 made up of the following components: one, $2,925,000 in debt issuance; two, $900,000 in grants if extension of grants approved; and three, $100,000 appropriated through the capital plan. To allow the voters opportunity to vote if they wanted to turn down the project, one, the current funding resolution would need to be repealed."
Okay, look, this came about because we also suggested we add a question, or add an option to not go forward with the project. So I think that we accept that we are going forward with the project based on the resolution. Everything you've read so far does not conclude a further referendum on some of the details. It defers it to the Selectmen, but we are not prohibited from getting direct feedback from the people. We're doing that now, but I heard enough comment that they wanted a referendum as opposed to just a hearing and then we decide on our own. So I guess I'm very sympathetic to the concerns that were raised, that we've made a promise to the people, and we really remade on the promise. Now, if we want to consider that to be the way we do business and move forward, well, there's three of us, and we'll see how the vote goes, but I think we need to reconsider having a referendum with wording that is not confusing and acceptable and well-defined.
Was that a question asked of Bond Counsel? Or actually of Randy? Whether we could actually do it at all? As Jeff was suggesting, take out the "no" as an example?
Or revise this into?
Take out the "no," and then... I mean, is it, was the "no" portion of that the primary reason? It doesn't sound like it in the resolution.
I don't know. So, I don't know. Would anybody who was there be willing to speak?
That's the question.
The question, the questions started by Jeff and taken a little forward by Chris is basically, could we still have a referendum if we could find a properly, proper way to word said referendum? This was deemed to be not needed.
Darlene has it.
I was hoping, Darlene. Darlene? Let's start, let Darlene speak. She knows better than this than anyone.
No, and truly it's not, because I know better than you.
Well...
But ultimately, the suggestion of the questions that were put forward by the Board of Selectmen, put forward the concern that it is a state statute that to bring a question to a referendum, it must be able to be answered yes or no. That is what became the concern that was put forward to the town attorney. Had you draft a question, because one of the questions that was on that piece of paper was, "Do you want concrete or asphalt?" You can't answer that question yes or no. It cannot be definitively answered. That leads to, okay, you choose asphalt versus concrete. Well, then, if you separate those questions and you do, "Do you want concrete?", and you do it yes or no, and then you do the second question, "Do you want asphalt?", yes or no. What is the legality to which question outweighs the other one as far as what product then is to be used by the authority of the Board of Selectmen? So what happened was, is by the suggestion of the Board of Selectmen to even put those questions forward in the form of a referendum, then yes, was promised to the voter. It became a legal concern that you would never be able to, just as that question that was put forward earlier this year, it had a full text resolution that supported it, had fuller information to provide to the voter of what was the question. The concern by Danny DeBella and Bond Counsel is you would never be able to draft a document that would be definitive enough to tell us voters that it would be, that it would go to the Greenhouse, that it would go with curbing. It would go not with curbing. It would be what material? That is why that decision is ultimately, and there are statutes that support that, that that's why there are statutes that support that it is the decision of the Board of Selectmen. And I've been carefully used this comparison, but when we initially had the firehouse put forward, there was a dollar amount that was put to the voters that equated, we were fortunate. It was a different type of vote, in the sense that we had a plan that told us the firehouse was going to be this big, and it was going to be this potential material. But ultimately, when that vote was put to the voter, it was us looking at the dollar amount that we potentially didn't agree to spend, which did equal to what that building was going to look like. So they went back, they changed the plan, but the vote itself still represented the cost of that building. In that example, the building committee for that firehouse, they still had open-ended authority given by the Board of Selectmen at that time. They could have chosen to literally put the parking lot differently. They could have used a different material. They could have put the bays to a different side. Had that project come up with a concern, it was in the authority of ultimately the Board of Selectmen to have to respond to those concerns. If the engineer for that building had said, "Whoops, you got to do it differently," they would have been the end decision makers for that project. That would not have had to come back to the town as an entity for another referendum, although you had all been given a plan to look at. Yes, this was very different in the sense of we all don't have a diagram, and I respect that concern from all of you. And yes, I respect that you were told something, and now unfortunately, seemingly, you're all being told that's not exactly how you can do it. But it is with concern that we can't put forward the questions the way statute allows, the way the town attorney and Bond Counsel will even support legally.
Good to hear. Thank you, Dr. Darlene.
Can I just ask one, hopefully clarifying question? The referendum that we voted on, because it referred to the Malone and McBroom Plan, did we actually vote on that plan in addition to the vote for money, even though it's not explained to us that way?
Which, as you point out, is specifically addressed in the resolution, which is...
Yes. So we thought we were not voting on a plan, but we actually did vote on it.
In a sense, you were, yeah. And believe me, folks, this is in no way, shape, or form an attempt on my part or either of my colleagues' part to try and bypass you in this process.
But didn't Randy, didn't Randy say in that letter that actually the scope of the project was still under the auspices of the Board of Selectmen?
Right.
So while it was based on a plan, it is not the plan. And we could come back today and just say, "We're going to, you know, we're going to concrete one street," and you all would be incorrect, and so we can still do that. So I think it's the basis in which that, if I understand it correctly, we're allowed to spend up to $2.9, but we don't have to.
We have to, and I would be an advocate for not, if this happens.
Okay, right there.
I think that we could look at it that that plan was utilized to help support the dollar amount that was being put forward had a purpose, but it didn't lock me into what the plan has to be.
Getting back to your motion, the, what you laid out here, essentially Streetscape Committee One, plus Elizabeth and Lane Street.
Actually, that was, that was on Streetscape One. That was on theirs, but that's not part of it. That's phase two.
Okay.
It's part of my motion, but it's not, not something that's not part of it.
It's not, it was written on.
Okay.
That should be in here.
So do you think this is consistent with your stated objective to not spend as much money as we could possibly spend? I mean, this is basically do everything and do it with the most expensive materials.
Of the two materials we've been discussing, yes, do everything with the more expensive of the two materials. My hope would be, and I won't be sitting in this seat much longer, my hope would be now, and my hope would be as a taxpayer, that bids would come in lower than anticipated. I have, we have no idea. Neither do any of the experienced folks in the, in the audience have, they probably have a better idea than we do, but no idea how this is going to turn out when it goes out to bid, but that's really the best way to find out. Our engineers, Malone and McBroom, who's been mentioned throughout here, are confident that we can do this project as proposed within the money that we have available from both grants and town bonding. We may find that not to be the case.
I mean, it's just as possible that the bids come in a little higher or substantially higher, which I think, to me, argues for a phased approach. As we discussed the last meeting, we talked about phase one being Route 7, the full-length materials to be discussed separately, and then a commitment on a three-to-five-year timeframe to do the second part. Now, one of the things that accomplishes is it gives us a very definitive reading on whether the engineer's cost estimates will be held up with actual bids.
True, but I would also say in reference to that, that doing it in that fashion is in the end going to cost more money in total. As we, as we discussed at a previous meeting, the contractor winning a bid and then having to demobilize and take all of his equipment and then so forth home and come back in, as you said, five years or whatever, is going to cost us more money, yeah.
Wow, I don't know if that's accurate.
Why?
You can't, you can't say anything definitively like that.
Not definitely.
What I'd like to do, let's, this, we've got a motion on the floor. One second. I'd like to go through the motion, at least just start to talk about things that we're reacting to, what we've heard in the hearing. And let me, let me preface it by saying, in all the meetings I've been in, there is no one really who has, that I've seen that says no. That vote did come with people who didn't want to bond it, but at these meetings, all I've heard is yes, let's do something. And so let's deal with the somethings. With respect to your phase, Route 7, forget the phases, Route 7.
Where?
Sorry. On your Route 7, Bruce, west side from just above the Greenhouse, it is, it is clear to me that, that, that it is the responsibility of this board to take every piece of sidewalk in consideration. I think it's been negligence, if you will, and probably hazard negligence, not overt, that we haven't addressed it. It was my question to Mike about, you know, if we had fixed the one outside, we'd still have a perfectly good concrete sidewalk with, you know, one place replaced. I think we really need to press the boards going forward to make sure that they put in the budget... in the budget, whether it's in the capital plan or whether it's in Rick's budget, to make sure that there is an annual maintenance of sidewalks. That said, we have to include everyone. And Kent Greenhouse, my wife said, well, who walks to the Greenhouse to buy a plant? Fair question. But what happens in five years when it's another place? What happens when it's affordable housing? What happens when it's a restaurant? Then all of a sudden, we're putting in a sidewalk. And I think for the time and energy that we're talking about, that in your motion, the west side should include all the way down to the Greenhouse.
I would not object to that. I would, well, I would however say, and I don't want to go into discussion on this because it's not part of this discussion tonight, but we have submitted an application for additional funding. It's called a.
I want to stop you there. I know you got that.
All I'm going to say, I'm just going to say one thing, one thing. And it will fund new, I mean, we don't have it, we've submitted it, but it will fund new sidewalks only, not replacement of old. So that would be a case. The sidewalks from the former Los Abos building to the Greenhouse would be considered new sidewalks. So just, that's all I want to say. As would Lane Street and a few other areas in town that don't have anything, something that could be classified as a real sidewalk. That's all. Go ahead, I, I, all right, what you just said.
Jeff, that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Route 341, south side from Cusettonic River Bridge, Cusettonic River Bridge to the Firehouse, is that, is I understanding that properly? Correct. Okay. It is my feeling that with respect to looking at the whole definition of town, part I think what was unfortunate was when this definition of village center, which was, which was part of the charter of the mission statement of the committee, the village center was undefined. It was defined in my mind by a group of people that said, and I don't think, you know, it was any malicious intent, but it was defined as basically the monument north, maybe a little bit south and east and west a little bit. And then it expanded, but of course, we're not bringing the Greenhouse in there, or not even consider what zoning considers the village center is the village center 1, residential 1, and residential 2. So clearly, to me, it just wasn't, there was no encompassing thought. And I get it, I get that they went down and they did a good job. I think they did admirable job walking and figuring out and going places and seeing it. But I think it's this opportunity, the opportunities right now for our board to say, well, let's pull back and do the macro perspective of all our sidewalks. That said, I think I've broken it down into two things. One is the commercial and one is the residential. I actually sat down with Curtis Grant today up in Salisbury to talk to him about what their philosophy was. And as you know, they put in new sidewalks in Lakeville. In doing so, he said they are committed to putting concrete and granite in the commercial centers where there's heavy traffic. And they're also, anywhere else primarily residential, it is all asphalt and asphalt curbing. In fact, he said wherever it was a state land, state property, he allowed, you know, he worked off the state's curbing that they do for the actual road. And I think that's, to me, that makes some sense. There are, so when it goes back specifically to this.
Yeah, so be specific on south side.
Specifically from Elizabeth Street, west to the bridge.
So you were just talking about south side.
Uh, yeah, this is the south side of.
From the Cusettonic River to the driveway to the Firehouse is what you.
So that's all of Bridge Street and Maple Street, correct?
All Bridge Street and a good portion of Maple Street.
Okay, so what I'm suggesting is that the residential section from the bridge to Mount Algo, or the corner of Elizabeth Street right there, is residential. Go into Kent School.
On the Mount Algo side of the road.
Go into Kent School. So basically, you come off of Mount Algo and you go right over to Kent School on that side of the road. That, to me, is a residential street, residential usage.
Yeah.
Okay. So to me, my way of thinking, nobody parks there. There's not a heavy traffic there except for the kids, and it's not commercial. Okay. From Elizabeth Street.
Still on the same side of the road.
Same side of the road, heading to the monument is commercial.
Sure. Soon to be with your store, yeah.
Okay. So to me, that would, that would merit using the same materials as you would, as we talked about doing the north, north and south.
Jeff?
Thank you very much. I do have a concern, so the, yeah, so that's, so the north side, so what I would recommend is on that south side, if you actually take away, would, don't consider improving at this point from Elizabeth Street corner to the bridge, thus saving us right here, thus saving us a little bit of money there.
Yeah.
I'm also cognizant of the fact that, and I lived on Elizabeth Street, and I'd seen on many occasions, be it funerals, weddings, church events, or mass itself, both churches utilizing that sidewalk for parking.
On the other side of the street.
On the.
Cemetery side.
On the cemetery side.
Right.
And in fact, today, if you look at it, I just took a nice picture of it, and there it is, two cars parked right on the sidewalk, cannot get by there.
Well, it's not, it's really not, technically, it's not legal to park there because the only parking is just right here. This, this car is parked on the sidewalks in the picture.
It's legal to park on the sidewalk.
And my point is, yeah, so this is, this is illegal.
Both of them.
Both of them are illegal.
We, we know that. I mean, that makes, everybody knows that.
Correct.
The point is, if you put granite firstly there, no one's climbing that curb.
Well.
Well, if they are, they're not getting off.
Well, it was, John Johnson did say in his piece tonight that it's been discussed that should be some sort of rounded curb.
Okay, well.
To unpump your tires.
A little bit of interesting information from, from our friends in Salisbury, they put, he said, don't put the sharp edge granite in. I said, why? He said, they blew out four tires the first week.
Yeah.
So you know what he did? He had the town crew grind the corner. So he said, get a better ledge if you're going to do that. So we don't do that. But the point is here, I think town of Kent is walking into a lawsuit viability should anyone get hurt, hit, bumped into, or anything there. In my way of thinking, you take that whole side from what would be the Episcopalian driveway, or in fact, in front of that whole cemetery.
Yeah.
All the way down to Elizabeth Street. And this isn't my idea, by the way, this was, I think Mike brought it up a long time ago, and I think it's excellent. I say we either, we decommission it, and whether the state can come and reclaim it and make it parking, I think that would be optimal. But it would force people over here, down the street, and where the proper lighting was.
People could then park there legally, what are you saying?
Well, it's not our problem, you know what I'm saying?
If this was not a sidewalk, this, this hole, would be legal parking.
It's not our problem. Whether they, yeah, I would think they could legally park there, but again, the point is, A, we don't spend any money on it, and B, we don't have any eligibility for it. And if you make rounded curves, as is suggested, I think you are creating a nuisance. I mean, I don't know, Jeff, if that makes sense, but.
Well, yes, I'm confused about one thing. When you say abandon it, are you talking about making, eliminating sidewalk?
Completely.
I would agree.
So there's costs associated with that?
So there's a, if you look at this project, those two pieces right there are, are each a third of the cost from going from the monument down to the street.
Okay, but so how do people walk?
So, here you go, this is a better way to look at it. So you come out of Elizabeth Street, cross the crosswalk, and you come down in front of the churches and.
The church and.
Which, by the way, most traffic walks this way because it's Kent School traffic. Or if it's children walking, they're here, or they have a crosswalk guard that goes up.
And, you know, I brought this very same thing up before that you bring up now, and I do not disagree with it, but I've been told by a number of people that they do walk this piece of sidewalk, but I, I don't know. I mean, I, I could cross over here and then walk up this.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, okay, a lot of people do a lot of things that they like to do, but the point is, who are we serving here?
People.
Well, the people, but we also have to be responsible for safety. And that's all, I hear, safety, safety, safety. This is not safe. No matter what we do, it's not safe. So either we enforce it and make sure that we have a sidewalk, but then you're going to be ticketing all those people, which I don't think we should do to neighbors, or we just continue using it and A, get a savings, and B, create, create parking in town.
How do you prevent people from walking?
I'm sorry?
How do you prevent people from walking there after there's no sidewalk?
Well, that's their choice. People can jaywalk, people can do any walking they want.
Right, for example, right now, people walk down the street and they go sidewalk there. They walk in the street.
They have to.
Because they have a choice.
But this, you have a choice. It's not like we're not presenting them a choice of where to walk. There is a choice.
I'm nonplussed by that, but, so there's some details we can work out in the future, but is that really what we want to do right now, to talk about?
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
Okay, you're talking about specific parts of the.
He's talking about.
Actually, I'm talking about this motion that I, I have questions of.
So you're proposing along the way here to amend parts of the motion with some details about eliminate this, eliminate that, which I don't yet finish.
I'm just taking his motion. It may, his motion may fail, but I just, I think it's a good opportunity to be able to work through this. Does that make sense?
So for this discussion, what is the amendment? It's about the.
So it's on the north side on the Route 341.
North side of 341.
Okay, it says crosswalk at Elizabeth Street and Maple Street extension.
That's, that's, that's good.
To Maple Street.
You were focusing on the south side.
I'm sorry, you were correct. I was focusing on the south side. No, south side I've already talked about.
Okay, so this is.
The north side from the crosswalk at Elizabeth Street to Maple Street extension. So you're talking about the crosswalk right here, right, to Maple Street extension. Where, where you have parsed this differently than most has been presented is you haven't given us Bridge Street and Maple Street. You've just gone straight across 341, which is fine.
So I, so the only, what you just described, it would be from the crosswalk at Elizabeth Street to, to.
No, it would be, not from the crosswalk at Elizabeth Street. It would be from the, the Episcopalian driveway.
Right.
To Maple Street extension. From here, this would be better.
Same driveway.
Bridge Street driveway.
Right, so it would be, that would be gone.
Maple Street extension to the other way.
So just looking at the statement, here's, here's the actual driveway. Yeah, so yes, yes.
So you're talking about this.
Correct.
So you're talking about eliminating the.
From right there.
Sidewalk from the Elizabeth, from the Elizabeth Street crosswalk to the St. Andrews driveway.
Correct.
So that's what, that's what they would say on the north side.
So then it would say from, yes, it would say from the St. Andrews driveway.
So he would remove Maple Street extension and.
Yeah, I would remove from crosswalk at Elizabeth Street.
But to.
From, and it would read from St. Andrews driveway to Maple Street extension. Is that, is that all it?
This is going to go right past the center.
Oh, oh, I, I bet it, I, I, yes.
Got it, Jeff?
You're, you're saying, you're trying to adjust it to still fit this motion.
Correct, I am fitting your motion by amending it in my mind as to how, with the issues that I have, based on walking around.
From St. Andrews driveway to.
Yes, right. So the implication of that, we can talk about later, but in effect, it modifies it in that manner. Can we not talk, please? Thank you, unless you have a question? Thanks.
Actually, I do have a question. What is considered Maple Street extension? Where is.
Maple Street extension.
Before the railroad tracks.
Maple Street extension is, if you go.
No, I know where it is, but I mean, where.
Starts with this intersection with 341. That's the beginning of Maple Street extension, going up the rise.
Yes, I know where.
Up the rise over the railroad tracks. In my mind, it begins at, at its intersection with 341, which is actually called Maple Street.
Yeah, it's a very wide mouth there.
It is. And that needs to be addressed in the future by connecting the sidewalks to Stewart Farms, Affordable Housing, which is up in the street extension. That's for another, another phase. That's a tough issue to write. Steve?
Does the proposed motion allow for some design considerations and amendments in future by a finance unit put together by a real engineer?
Oh, yeah, sure. So if we turn, for example, we turn this motion as written to an engineer, yeah, they could come back and say, gee, see, no, it would make more sense to do such and such, and you could save a bunch of money by not doing, yes, sure.
Yeah, but that's, is that, is that a question, or is your question, can we have the input to do that?
I'm just wondering why would these design considerations be being part of that as a moment?
Uh, one, in my opinion, if this is made as a motion, this is what carries, and this is what goes as a design team. I may be wrong, but I've been wrong already with no votes and things like that, and I just want to be careful to make sure that we're going to do it right. And in my opinion, these design changes actually have cost implications, and those cost implications, as an example, so if you did, as suggested here, removed two-thirds of the monument to the bridge, construction of sidewalks on either side, you took that cost, you already can go to the Greenhouse. And that's sort of, I think, where I think we all need to be tweaking.
I also heard too that this was to the community hall, which isn't really in this blue paper, right?
No, no, there is no plan to take this to the.
Community center, was there?
It is not. To the community house, no. That's not under the plan, correct?
On here?
On the motion.
No, no, on the motion.
Yeah.
Just the sidewalk opposite the community house.
Opposite.
From South Commons. We're not talking about creative sidewalks on the other side.
No, I'm talking about the north part of Highway 7.
The proposal that the motion says from South Commons, south of town, all the way through the monument, coming up Route 7, to quote, the existing sidewalk opposite the community.
Right, so it does go all the way up, which is beyond what this blue thing says, right?
Which is beyond what the second committee recommended, correct?
So, although I thought he was, Peter was referencing the west side where it just goes to the pfeiffer drum, which it would, it would go to the pfeiffer drum.
Not to the community house.
Not to the community house.
But if you remember, Jeff, there was a recommendation from the second committee not to do any of the sidewalks north of the Kent drains, north side of their access, basically to my house.
Right.
Down to, to the Kent drain.
That they're, that they're in good enough shape.
They seem to be in good enough shape, which again, is the same argument I would have for the little piece that goes from Elizabeth Street to the bridge.
I guess a little inconsistent because we're talking about continuity of materials, and now we're going to leave a stretch because they're kind of okay. The other ones are less okay, so we've got to fix something.
Well, just back for a second to Steve's comment and to Chris's response. Chris, just to point out, under the included phase of that, they might.
Whereabouts?
Where it says included.
Which paragraph? Got it.
Number one in parentheses says alternate line items could be included for bid pricing. So we could be putting some of these things, and I think this is what you're saying, Steve, we could be putting some of these things that we're discussing right now in as alternate line items for potential cost savings?
I would just, you know, think that we want to keep this motion as simple as possible to allow for professionals who, instead of just allowing it to allow, prepare for it and, and that's it, and not try to design it off and have to.
Well, I take, I take, I take offense to that.
No.
Or umbrage. The, it is our responsibility to deal with this. It is my opinion that both the two committees that have been put forward have gotten, done great work and had good suggestion. To me, I'm not going to rubber stamp them. I think they're inadequate. I think they're not all encompassing, and therefore, I think it is our opportunity right now, and we've, we've, we've passed this down three or four times, this, this discussion, we've moved down the line three or four times. So here we are, and it's my thinking that we ought to be able to react to it. That's, that's just my, my feel.
Chris?
Yes, Jeff?
Chris might have mentioned that the street there on 341 by the bridge being residential. Well, what's that going to be commercial for the next 30 years?
Zoning.
Is that, is zoning residential?
It's a residential zone.
Kent School right at the end of that.
It's still in the residential zone.
By the bridge.
Do we have?
Mike?
I'd just like to point out, because I, I thought about that sidewalk being removed a lot. There's one thing I do want to point out, by removing it, we would have to create a paved road there. That would cost a lot of. By removing it, we would have to create a paved road there. That would cost about the same as a sidewalk. When we eliminate the sidewalk, it doesn't, they're, that becomes a state problem.
Correct.
So initially, it wouldn't save money in the project, but in the long run, it'll save the maintenance of it.
And liability, which is my primary concern.
The liability, which could be far worse.
So, uh, Peter, was your question correctly addressed, the one you just asked?
About going up to the community center?
Yes.
Well, it seems like your motion was.
My motion says, uh, on the east side, uh, I'm sorry, uh, on the west side on Route seven, from just above the Kent Greenhouse to the Fife and Drum Restaurant. So that's on the Fife side of Route seven. To the Fife and Drum Restaurant, not beyond it, on that, on the Fife side of the road.
I understood that.
And on the other side of Route seven, from South Commons to the existing sidewalk opposite the community house. So yes, it does say on that one, it would go all the way to the community house.
Yes, which is beyond then where this is here.
That's correct.
Which we've also heard from good testimony that that sidewalk from the Kent Green driveway to the community hall, which is the asphalt, is in very good condition. Now, I do walk it all the time. I live there, so I know.
I give, I give you that, yeah.
It's in very good condition. Doesn't seem to make sense.
Just want to make sure, okay.
And to just point about continuity, I, I would, and, and with my, my thought process of, of the differentiating between residential and business, I would propose that we actually, if we take the, we do the granite, we do it right past the Kent Green where commercial ends, which is the bakery, I think it is? Yeah, the bakery. So before you hit the condos, Starbucks in, and my house.
So for the, the asphalt, we're putting granite curbing, is that what you're saying?
If, if, to the point of, of continuity and trying to keep and define commercial versus residential, that is, to me, that's logical.
Okay, well, I, I do not totally disagree with anything you said so far, which is somewhat refreshing. Um, I don't, I don't see what is wrong with, uh, approving this motion and sending it to Malone and McBroom and getting, getting a plan and getting it out to bid, and if it comes in overpriced, then we've got some things that we can change. Or we can include those things in, in the submission to them and say, please come up with a plan. This is our, our, our wish list plan, but can you also include, as is specified in here, can you include some quote alternate line items that could be included for bid pricing?
Well, I mean, it's a lot more to it because we haven't even discussed materials, but, um, I, I, I think this motion assumes that we will do, uh, we will not do a phased program.
It doesn't.
Because the, the blue sheet shows part one, which I think is, was pretty well defined, uh, of basically Route seven, and part two being Bridge Street, Maple Street. Uh, that's sort of the way we had left our last meeting, that that's how it's going to be proposed. To do the whole project would be all of it. Uh, and you're eclipsing that discussion by saying, which is through this motion out there, which clearly is do it all.
It, it is, but so, so is this.
Yes, except we can, and we, okay, then can we discuss doing your proposal slightly distant from the blue sheet in phases, because I, I think it's appropriate to, to break this into two phases.
So when you talk about phases, Jeff, what's your, what's your A timeframe, uh, and B funding methods?
It's what we had discussed the last meeting. We came out where, uh, we were talking about, if we talked about phases, phase one would be, uh, Route seven, and then we would commit to a, we said three to five year timetable. We could move that up. Uh, but to commit to doing the rest of the sidewalks is a second phase.
So these are these are new phases, basically?
Yes, agree with that basic phase one.
So to that point.
And remember, doing the whole project, as I think you pointed out, Chris, we're not going to bring in twenty excavators and tear up the whole town.
Right.
We're going to do something and then something else and then do the rest. So, uh, it's going to be phased anyway, so I think we should break the project up into these two phases. Uh, regardless of what the material discussion, how that results.
Can I add a clarification? Bruce, you mentioned when you first introduced the, this motion, um, and I didn't really understand your, your worrying and so on to include the school, uh, Elizabeth Street to the school or.
And when we get it repeated?
Yeah, you know, unless, you know, you guys are getting to that, I don't want to.
Well, that's, that's, that's next, but I'll repeat it. It says, uh, Elizabeth Street from Route three forty one to Kent Center School. Necessary repairs and upgrades should be made as determined through discussions. It says here with Kent Center School PTO. It should be with Kent Center School, uh, administration and PTO and appropriate entities.
Why the PTO? What about the board?
That shouldn't, that shouldn't, no, I said PTO. It says PTO here. It should be, obviously.
But you didn't include the Board of Education, which.
I, I just did. I just said, and, and school administration, Kent Center. It should, obviously be then away before the PTO.
But why isn't that discussion?
There's a typo in there.
Um, okay, then. Why isn't that discussion, uh, just basic maintenance that, um, uh.
It could be.
An ongoing.
Personally, I think the side, I don't walk it a lot, Chris, you did for, for many, many, many years. I don't think that the sidewalk going from Maple Street or from Bridge Street to, uh, Chodder Avenue is bad.
Well, that's irrelevant. I mean, the point is that if necessary repairs or improvements are needed, the town should do it as a capital item or a normal ongoing expenses, depending on the nature of it.
No question.
I, I think it confuses the issue. We keep throwing things in, and you threw in another grant here today to keep confusing the issue. That doesn't have to be part of this motion.
It does not.
That's something the town should do, and Marty certainly should be included in when we do it, how we do it, and, uh, under, uh, uh, what the end result is, but I think that confuses what we're trying to do to, to move forward with the project.
Cross it out.
So could I then ask just one clarification? When you were talking about continuity of sidewalks and the materials used, and, um, and Chris part of what was going on in, in, um, in Stanford, you know, doing the, the mixed use with residential being asphalt and commercial. Is this then, so that's commercial, I mean, it's residential until you get to the school, then it's a different, uh, use factor than residential in the school itself. So you'd keep that as asphalt, then we, we no consideration make that a cement block.
Well, and this, my view is that we should do these sidewalks in asphalt. So that would be perfect continuity to do the rest of it.
That would be a maintenance of the town. That would not be a maintenance project. That would be a new construction.
Well, I think, uh.
I mean, such as the street state has been talking about along, so you're adding something else to what has not even been talked about ever before.
That's right. That's why I didn't think it should be part of this motion, because it's something we need to address.
I would draw that sentence from the motion. Cross it out.
So the new one, clarification, I might, um, since we do have a capital plan, as I mentioned, you might say, um, for the school itself to redo the, the, um, the parking lots, the sidewalks, the exit ways, the, all that to the school itself. Um, and we're looking for luggage, I mean, we're looking for, you know, cost factors and so on. Can you mix the capital plan funding that's in there now and, and we can expand that with a, with an asphalt around the school, which has a ton of these?
I, I would say yes, but that's for future discussion.
I didn't understand what you just said, Martin.
Well, yeah, because when we first put it in, there was no, there was no talk about side, of cement sidewalks or concrete sidewalks around the school.
You already have, you already have them.
No, we have asphalt sidewalks.
In front of the school?
We have one entryway which is that, which is concrete, but everything else is asphalt.
Yeah, I understand.
So what I'm saying is since we went to replace and repair those, we do need curbing fix and so on. I'm just wondering, an, an extension, now we're talking phasing, again, I, I'm not looking to do that necessarily in with, or would recommend doing it, but would you guys consider phasing? I mean, I, I think you're short sighted. If you don't do this in phasing, you don't have a three to seven point actually, a three to five.
So if I understand it correctly, I really, uh, you're, you're suggesting your capital plan, uh, needs to be upgraded to make those, those improvements.
Or Fife and Drum spoke on that, they, they wanted to curbing in concrete, so.
Well, I think, personally, Jeff, I think what, what we need to do is, as we've talked about the phasing, phase one is Route seven, north to south, as much as we can, I mean, as much as we delineated here. I think that's where we were at the last meeting. The next phase, whether it's in a three year period of time, would be Maple Street from the monument towards, uh, Elizabeth Street. Uh, and we can make those modifications or not if we choose, but I think that they're, they're approved. And then the, uh, Maple Street phase.
It would be Maple Street and Bridge Street.
Maple Street.
And Bridge.
Well, Bridge Street, Monument to, yes, Bridge.
Maple Street and Bridge Street.
Correct, and if you look at the numbers that were given us, um, it's two point four, rounded up to two point five for phase one to become concrete and granite. That is from, well, hopefully from the greenhouse. Uh, this, this says from the greenhouse. These are the same numbers. Remember Barbara furnished us those numbers. That's what I'm looking at, the same thing. Look at phase one.
Is that here?
Yeah, but I'm also adding in the engineer's cost that you're not looking at. So the fifteen, the thirty five percent of the surveying. So what was not clear here, if I may, on this, is even though these, these were broken up, they were tallied, and then the override, override surveying and engineering were added. You see what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
So what I did is I broke them apart, and I added in the surveying and the, and the engineering in each of the phases, so we could get a true understanding as to which, what are the sections each cost.
Okay, that's, uh, well done. So on part one, what did you come up with?
On phase one for concrete and granite, which phase one, if you will, part one, as written here, part one, North Main Street and South Main Street, assuming the greenhouse is in that, right to the Fife and Drum. Uh, this does not include beyond the, um, Kent Green driveway, which I would also like to throw in there, but, uh, but I got two point five million rounded, so two four eight four nine hundred. If you did asphalt, again, with fifteen percent.
Before you go to asphalt, so, so in order to get the, the present one thousand eight hundred and forty two, up to two point five million?
Two point five. You multiply that by thirty five percent.
You use this number down here?
These two, fifteen percent and twenty percent. Is that accurate, Barbara?
That's the information I was given.
Okay, so, but it's thirty five percent override.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so about, instead of one three oh three, the number would be?
Uh, uh, one million seven hundred and fifty nine, seven twenty five, or a million seven sixty. Cost, right now, if we were to do it, from the bottom to the, pretty much to the top. And keep in mind, we have a million dollars of grant money and capital money, correct?
We hope.
Well, we hope, but if, if you use that as the number, then you bottom line that, and that means you're only, you're bonding one point five million. Or you're bonding eight hundred thousand dollars, which I don't even think is worth bonding. Maybe you figure out how else.
I consider those would say one point five million isn't worth bonding in the bonding world.
Can I make a comment? Uh, it's getting dangerously close to my bedside, so we're going to have to get out of here, but concerning doing it two phases, there's absolutely, absolutely will cost more. Uh, we need a contract from day in and day out. If we have to go back, there's a, there's going to be a really big increase to be able to move it back.
Remobilization, right?
That's number one, mobilization. Number two, doesn't the bonding or the grants that we get, I mean, aren't they there now? Are they going to be there three, five years from now?
No, one, one of the grants, as has been discussed at length, one of them is set to expire this December thirty first.
Right.
And we submit an, an application for an extension. We don't know how that's going to be.
Right, and, and the other thing is, is that, you know, when you do this kind of construction, and I don't know if anybody's been up to Sharon and around there, there's a lot of construction to business, and it's better just to get it done and get it over with so that, you know, business knows that, you know, we're going to go for a period of one season, we're going to lose time, so if we have to go through two seasons at different times, that's a burden for you putting on businesses.
Well, the, the point there, um, if you're doing Route seven all, all at once.
Yeah.
And two wings, you're still disruptive.
Oh, no.
So doing Route seven, in my mind, and dealing with whatever season, if you, if you lose a season, although we've been told they can do it fairly quickly, settles it down, and then in two or three years, you can do the other two, and you don't have that disruption of that.
Not on Main Street.
One after the other. The other thing with, it's, the, the, the point is valid that bonding right now is cheap and it's good. The real question is, does phasing it out give us more opportunity to explore and get other money from grants? And that's really the fundamental risk we take. Do we decide, hey, hey, look, hey, look, um, and it's, and it's a risk because the governor has said we're in a debt diet right now, but, but as Bruce just, uh, pointed out, he's already exploring another grant for a million and a half. We're not going to go there, but the, there is, there is a line of thinking that I'm subscribing to that says if we wait to do the other two, two things. One, we can potentially get more grants. Two, we can stick some money potentially in the capital plan for two or three years. And don't check, yes, we can do that. We can do that. Um, we can also learn from the mistakes or the oopses that we make on Route seven and maybe avoid them, because I don't care what project we, who project we do, everybody knows you wish you had done something a little differently, and there it is. So I see that as advantageous.
Excuse me, can I add just a word? What I think might be advantageous for being to have you guys rather than trying to carve this up here to save a couple of dollars here and there, have the engineers give you a recommendation, it is their business to know, the least cost way to do these projects. Wouldn't it be better to consult with them rather than you guys making these determinations here now that everybody's left the room?
Well, in fairness, that is exactly what I was totally frustrated by with both streetscape committees. Tried to get you guys to give us an, particularly because I was asking for it, specific options on types of material to use. To even ask, and we didn't get that. We, I never got it. To this day, I haven't got it.
You didn't get that. You just didn't acknowledge that you thought.
Okay, you can repeat that assertion, but basically, uh, we didn't, you're suggesting now that we go to the engineer and ask those very questions, launch the whole project, and then say, by the way, can you give us some lower cost options? We should have had them here right now. The only lower cost option we have is asphalt, which I personally think, based on some of the testimony here today, is the preferred solution. Now, I would prefer the asphalt. Yes, I would prefer the asphalt. You check, no, man, but my personal preferences for asphalt. So, uh, and that's also a lower cost and a lower maintenance, uh, uh, possibility. So that's my, uh, uh, my personal opinion. That's the only option that came through either of the committees. So now to suggest that, well, give it to the engineers and give them the opportunity to come up with lower cost options, that's what should have been done.
They're the guys who said do it all at once and don't cut it up into different phases. They're the ones, that's why we recommended it, because it was their opinion that the most efficient way to do this project.
Then what was it, what was it you were suggesting that we ask them to look to for options?
Because I see that both committees recommended that this project be done all at the same time. And now you guys are deconstructing the work and the research and the experience that members of these two committees have. You're deconstructing it here that now that everybody's left the room, and you're drawing, excuse me. You're drawing a conclusion when you say you think the room wanted to have asphalt.
I did not say that. I said, that was my opinion.
Okay, your opinion. Well, I certainly read this room a lot differently, and everybody seemed to me to speak overwhelmingly in favor of granite and concrete.
Absolutely not.
And I think that's what the only second.
Okay, let's, uh, let's, let's, let's debate. Hold on, can we? Thank you, John. Um, I think, I just want to point out, I don't think we're trying to deconstruct it. We're trying to understand it. And what, the frustrating side on the vote of selectmen, and I agree with Jeff, is there's never been a breakdown of the quadrants. That is why, in fact, after this, when I started spouting numbers, people say, that's not the numbers. Whether, whether we decide to do the whole project at once or in parts is not the question. The question right now is, we should look at it in pieces so we understand it, and I think that's what's important.
There was a total breakdown of all these files.
There was, I can picture that.
But, but not like this. This is the way, right?
Yes, it was. It was forty pages. You guys just didn't read it.
That's, that is inaccurate.
I saw it.
That is inaccurate.
And you asked for it, we got it.
Um, well, again, to be fair, you did present it, but it was not presented in a manner in which, outside of the scope of the whole project. It was broken down to quadrants, but wasn't done, designed, designed in, in the way I'm looking at it. Maybe that's my problem. The other thing is, I take, I, 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 the McRoom and, and Pride, is that it? Malone and Pride, thank you, may have seen this as an engineering cost savings. The only thing that I see as an opportunity here, the only thing, and it may not be right, is to get more grant money in the future. That's the only thing my goal is. My goal is to spend as little money of our own as possible. You may smirk, but I feel that the responsibility is to at least look at it and say, in the future. I mean, Bruce brought in a one point five million dollar whale the other day. If we could do that, we could do a lot more. We could take Marty's Elizabeth Street, we could do Lane Street.
But, but see, you're saying maybe we could get some more money in the future, while we've figured away an opportunity to get five hundred thousand dollars, because it's going to expire in a pretty silly way.
I don't know if it's figured away, we've asked for extensions, but that being said.
Okay, so I don't understand, other than the possibility of getting grants if we extend a phase, which is always a possibility, but a total crapshoot. Other than that, I don't understand why we would wanna do this in phases. I think anybody who is well versed in the construction world, Mike Goble, who's still here, he would agree, that phasing something just makes it more expensive, Bruce Bennett just said it.
It will be phased anyway, because you have to start at one end and go to the other at any spot.
Well, but it'll be one contract.
Not over three air period.
Getting one, one contract, and he knows he can commit to it, and we can find him a place where he can park his equipment and et cetera, and he's not gonna have to pack up and take it back home to Hartford, wherever he happens to be from, and come back in a couple of years. I just don't understand that. It's gonna be disruptive enough to the townspeople and to the businesses. I still firmly have the belief to, let's get it done in one phase. And in my belief, the only way to do that is to put a motion like this one in the hands of Malone and McRoom, have them come up in the next three, four months with a plan, with a design, that we can put out the bid, I'll put out a bid package as well, and get some hard numbers. And if the numbers come out above the amount of money that we have to spend, I'll be the first one to say, even though I will no longer be the first selectman, I'll be the first one to attend a meeting and say, I was wrong, this was more expensive than anybody anticipated, we need to find some ways to downgrade it. And maybe that will be removing sidewalks near St. Andrew Cemetery, or maybe that'll be doing some concrete, or maybe that'll be leaving out a whole section. I would not be in favor of coming back and asking the townspeople for one penny more than they've already been, they've already voted in favor of a bond resolution. So I continue to strongly believe, make adjustments, little adjustments to this, fine, but I don't, I don't agree, and I don't think I ever will agree with you, just for the sake of getting some additional grant money.
Bruce, we've had six meetings, public hearings, and all six of them, the majority of people have an opinion that it's been concrete and granite, and the majority of votes and speeches, letters, and everything else have said that, and they've said it to the three of you. I don't know why at this point in time, we're now trying to chop it all up and regurgitate it all, even though it's been worked with two to the days, ten years, and six counties. I think your guys' jobs is to give this thing up and running, like your attorneys told you to, and not to start, oh, this is residential, this is asphalt, this is concrete, that's not what you heard. And I think your job is to listen to what the people told you, and you do, to fulfill those needs.
I agree, I think, this is an unscientific statement, but I think eighty percent of the people in the room today, at least those that spoke, were in favor of concrete and granite.
All six meetings. And all at the same time, it's been consistent.
And saving the phase for the strong possibility of this additional grant that will only fund new stuff, perfect. Let's put sidewalks on Lane Street, the trees are dying there anyway, remove the dying trees, because they have to be removed, and in their place, we put a sidewalk for the first time ever. We take the sidewalk that now ends just past the, the end there, crossing the firehouse, it basically ends there, and we extend that with that money, because it's new sidewalk, there is none there. And we maybe extend it all the way to Stewart Farms.
No, I'm sorry, just understand, because that's not what's in your motion.
No, that's down here in Phase Two. And that, as somebody said, probably shouldn't even be in this motion.
No, you have, you have, under Route three forty-one, north side, if I'm understanding the sidewalk you're talking about.
North side.
From the crosswalk Elizabeth to Maple Street Extension, is that, isn't that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, that actually should, based on what I just said, it should be shorter than that.
So it shouldn't be to Maple Street Extension?
It should not, well, it can be, I mean, I have no problem with it going to Maple Street Extension, but I'm saying that we could shorten that, and since there's no sidewalk there already, we could do that hopefully with additional grant that only funds new sidewalks anyway. Again, no guarantee.
But that doesn't make any sense, because there's no sidewalk from the river tracks to Fife and Drum, and we're putting one in there. So I think you either do it all, or don't do it all. And your point, well taken, is get grants for other things, is where I was going with get grants and do these wings. That's where I was going, it's, that's really, and you know better than I, and I talked to Curtis Grand, and he said, like you said, you could get them, or you may not get them. And we could be in a position where if you went with this idea, if you went with this idea and you didn't get grants, we'd be in a position to scramble to get eight hundred thousand dollars, or such, you know, to do this. So. What's your thoughts, Jeff, and then Bruce?
Would you consider restating your definition of Route Seven with three forty-one to be Part One of Part Two on the blue sheet? Because we've got, that's pretty well documented and explained to the people. I mean, yours is broken up a little differently, and there's some nuances there. Blue sheet, I think, is pretty clear, and it's what Barbara based her numbers on.
Yes. Yes. Your question, yeah.
One word answer?
What he's looking for is you to translate that into this. Does that make sense? So, North Main Street.
North Main Street would, as it reads on the blue sheet, Part One, the monument to Kent Green Boulevard, which is the second exit from Kent Green, that's not Kent Green Boulevard, that's from.
It says Boulevard.
Is that Kent Green?
We go all the way to the.
The exit by the bakery?
The exit on the bakery.
That's Kent Green Boulevard?
Yes.
Okay, so monument to Kent Green Boulevard exit, monument to Fife, to Fife and Drum.
This is where I took it from.
Yep.
I had to shorten it.
Yep, you did. South Main, monument to Kent Green House, monument to South Commons Road, their driveway, yep. Part Two, Bridge Street, monument to Elizabeth, Elizabeth Street. On the north side, monument to the Husatonic River Bridge on the south side. And Maple Street, the monument to Maple Street Extension, and the monument to Kent Volunteer Fire Department driveway. Not much different than what I have, but I totally agree with everything.
Okay, it's not, rewording it, it's what's here. So if we submitted this, there would be the opportunity in discussing with the engineers about detailed modifications, whether changes on the.
Absolutely, throughout the whole project, right? Such opportunities.
Okay, so if we take your motion and we delete the bottom two paragraphs, which are somewhat extraneous, given why we're here.
The Phase Two part.
Phase Two.
And the Elizabeth Street part.
And the Elizabeth Street part.
Yeah, so those two are gone.
Yep.
And the blue language is substituted for what you call Phase One, the whole thing. So Phase, it's not really Phase One now, it's the project.
The project, all of the project.
Okay, so I guess the other, I'm okay with that, I feel like we should break it up, but I'm beginning to hear that we have a lot of support for that.
Joyce, a question?
Yeah, you're not, you're not getting rid of the whole Elizabeth Street paragraph, because you still wanna say should be sent immediately to the, right?
Yeah.
So you wanna keep that sentence?
I don't think you took Jeff across that, did you?
I did, but.
He did, but you wanna keep that sentence, my assumption is?
Yes.
Okay.
That's important, Joyce brings that up because she spoke to town attorney about the need for that.
Yes, okay, I agree. But the reference to Kent Center School is separate discussion from time.
Right, but I wanna be clear that if indeed this board decides to take out or add something, that we have that ability?
We absolutely have that ability during the project.
Okay, but.
I think the record should reflect that, and you view that as our opportunity and duty as the project goes on.
Absolutely.
But is it done in the building committee, or is it done at the Board of Selectmen level?
Building committee is a subcommittee of the Board of Education, so.
No, Board of Selectmen, I get it.
Of the Board of Selectmen. But it's done, it could be done in conjunction with, or it could be done by the building committee, as I can. I served.
Well, and mostly everything would have to be approved by the select.
I served on two, two such committees, and we made many modifications throughout both of those projects, the school and the firehouse, many. Sometimes things that had to be done, because they couldn't be done the other way, or sometimes because, hey, there's an opportunity to do something and make something better, let's do it that way, but we made a lot of them.
I could ask just a quick question about the funding, I've been really grieved on it. We have two point five million dollars in contingency. Everybody's been so concerned about safety, which it is really serious on sidewalks. Why aren't we spending some of that contingency money to do this then? Isn't that a urgent issue, a safety issue? So what do we have, two point five million dollars?
Well, that's, that is the Board, under the Board of Finance's purview firstly. Secondly, it really has nothing to do with the bonding component of it.
No, but I mean, we don't have to take that whole bond, we could spend some of that money.
To your point, I think that when we're about to pull the trigger, maybe, and we're in the cycle such that we have, next year will be, when we close out the books then, we might have some surplus to be able to deal with that.
That would be nice, I'd consider.
That is for the Board of Finance to figure out. Generally, that's really their role.
You're right, there's a surplus, designated fund balance, as we well know.
So the other elephant in the room is the materials of asphalt versus granite, I mean, concrete. We all agree on granite curving. The thing that really bothered me the most with the presentation from the subcommittees is this explanation that there was, nobody uses, nobody uses asphalt, doesn't look good, it's cheap, it's cheaper, it's cheap looking. I don't subscribe to that, in fact, I was pleasantly surprised when you went to Fallon, Massachusetts, and saw incredibly beautiful, well put together granite and asphalt. And what they did in their residential zone was asphalt and asphalt, which again sparked my, I was all for the concept of concrete. But having seen this, and knowing what the options are with respect to, with respect to a, with respect to cost, I find it intriguing. I mean, here's an example of in Salisbury, of where all the spalling happened, because the concrete, when I asked Curtis, how the heck did that happen? He said, well, what happens was the plow throws the snow onto the sidewalk, and that de-icing material that they put on the roads is horrible in its reaction to concrete. So they're gonna take that section, which is arguably out of town, it's up near the Catholic Church and that triangle, and he's just gonna pave over that concrete. That was his solution. I'm not saying it's right, I'm just saying that they basically said it's low usage.
It'd be better to rip it up and pave it.
Well, however, the point is that, this goes to my point, is I think it's more about maintenance than anything. If you don't maintain any product, it's gonna deteriorate. But to my point about the asphalt and granite, I didn't find that unattractive.
Pretty fresh looking, but I don't find it totally unattractive.
What does it for me is you get that fine line of the granite curving, which is really what the key is to attractiveness. So in any event, that's sort of mine.
But that too is something that, you know, we could, we could work with the engineer on that very thing, perhaps doing some of the outlining areas in that, in that fashion. Doesn't have to be decided tonight.
Okay, so would you be at the mind to have them price out two different materials?
I wouldn't mind it if that.
Knowing that we all agree on granite, right?
We've agreed on that, it's one thing we have agreed on for quite some time, but I wouldn't be opposed to asking them to price out two. And maybe even putting together a bid package that would involve, allow a bidder to submit two bids.
Well, I just found it an interesting contrast, because I agreed with, I actually was convinced by everybody, because I went around towns and couldn't find any sidewalks that were paved, and then I stumbled upon these.
So if we, if you revised your motion to include, the bidding would include two bids for concrete and asphalt, we would pump one more time choosing, but that's okay, choosing materials. And that might allow for the option of breaking it up in certain areas where.
Especially if we found that it was gonna be cost prohibitive, because we would all need one material.
Well, cost prohibitive is a certain threshold, but, you know, we may have two cost phases that we could deal with, and one is less expensive, we could choose it because it's less expensive. So that can be part of the bid package to request two bids, one reflecting proper use of asphalt, one respecting proper, for total use of concrete.
Yeah, I will say, as I've said a few times already, I won't have any say in it, other than.
Just a sec, sorry, I missed that, could you say it again, please?
Say it again, Jeff.
I would never, ever be in favor of doing this entire project in asphalt. I could be convinced to do some of the outlining areas if the price became too high, to do some of them in granite curving.
Well, I guess, what we do is we just get into your preference versus my preference versus his, that's all we're talking about here. And the majority of people were like, we want concrete, why, who the heck knows, they like it better. I think if we get the pricing, within the scope of what we're talking about, we can, we can produce pictures like this that will give a fair representation of what will be done, and then even people can have input then, but at least we will have the material costs hard and the timeframe, and we should be able to.
We can work with the engineer over the next three, four, or five months, rather than sitting here trying to do it all tonight.
Look, while everybody can argue about that we've delayed install, I think this is the process that had to happen, as ugly and messy as it's been. And with all due respect to the committees, who may not, who may disagree, because, you know, they had their certain perspective as how they wanted to do it, I think this was, this was necessary to do. But it's time to get them done, it's time to get the pricing, and we still have input at time. As long as it's of record, we still give the public input through the building process, and also be able to choose, if appropriate or needed, the cost.
The public will have input in that all the meetings we discuss, whether they be selectmen's meetings or committee meetings are public. There may not be another meeting like this called for this specific purpose, but the meetings are public.
Okay, just one other question, so we're kind of narrowing down some refinement to your motion, which might actually be workable. The directive to immediately submit to Malone and McRoom for a big, creation of a bid package, that's another step where I think we need to agree that that's gonna be reviewable by the selectmen. I mean, because the bid package now is gonna specify, specify options for construction.
Oh, you mean the bid package be reviewable? Oh, for sure, they're not gonna come up with a bid package and send it out to immediately the ten contractors, we get to see it.
Okay, this, the process of getting. Okay, this, the process of getting from where we are now to setting, we send out the contractors includes the opportunity to not include our review in detail. Like you have said, uh, affirmatively, you, you will never support asphalt over the entire project.
No.
Okay, that's fine. But the, uh, bid proposal can't go out to reflect that as a condition. That's your view of it?
That, yeah.
So it's gonna be, uh, options including concrete and asphalt.
Jeff, before you actually task Malone and McBrum with any work, they actually submit a contract that you need to sign with them, so you can lay out all those kinds of details in your contract.
We have that contract that have been signed.
Yeah, but I mean, it's gotta be, the directive has to be sent to them with some clarity ahead of time, or they're gonna...
No, it's gonna be in their contract. You have to sign a contract with them before they're gonna go start creating a bid package.
The specifics.
Okay.
And that's this five or six page contract. They prepared it in June, but it hasn't been signed because it's not, it doesn't have the detail in it that you're discussing. It has different detailing that they've put in it, so it hasn't been signed. But, um, once you decide how you want to proceed, then you modify this contract to include all the information that you want.
Okay. Uh, the request for them to issue that document is probably a good place to make sure the language is clear.
Right.
For sure.
Okay.
It's the first election. This one is.
Ask them to make it board approved.
Right, it should be all signed by all three, of the selectmen, whoever that may be.
Yeah, this is just by one person.
But I think the, the, it sounds to me, again, just let's do it in layman's terms, Bruce. The process is such, we sign the contract, they bid it out, they give us price points. I'm sorry?
Signing the contract engages them to start creating the specifications and the details, the bid package. And the bid package, they're gonna release a bid package until you confirm that bid package.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you. So, um, so there will be at least one, two steps before correct, one, signing the contract, and then two, um, creating what they actually know spec out. And then, once those bids come back, we can actually look at those as well, obviously.
Not knowing who we is.
Not knowing who we is. We the B O S.
So what, uh, is the status of this, um, motion?
Okay, so my motion is, uh, as stated here, um...
Well, you don't have to really read it, but the first paragraph...
Mine, mine, it stays the same until the words Elizabeth Street.
No, it does, no, no. In, in the very first one, because you moved to a two-phase plan. The top, you're taking that out, so the...
Okay, so I move project. For the complete renovation of the sidewalks in Village Center. Right, so I remove a two-phase plan, the words a two-phase plan.
Right. And replace it with project?
I move for the complete renovation of the sidewalks in Village Center.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Uh, I, I believe that the rest stays the same despite the potential changes we've thought about making, stays the same, uh, until we get into Elizabeth Street, two-thirds of the way down, that sentence, the entire sentence is removed, and the Phase Two piece at the very bottom is also removed. So that is my revised motion.
And the section from where it says Phase One through three forty-one details, that whole section is replaced with part one, part two?
Part one, part two from blue sheet.
From blue sheet. And then the included section stays the same.
Correct.
Uh, the, uh, reference to conduit for street lamps, would, would that include, uh, somebody who's talking about, uh, fiber optics?
Uh, that's, that's something worth considering, but in my research, I found that, uh, since we're not burying the wires overhead, meaning that the telephone poles are going to stay as they exist, that, um, people installing fiber optics would, would recommend and would rather put them on poles than underground. And so that's where fiber optics can go in Kent. Uh, and burial of wires was seriously discussed a couple of times, but it's a, it's a, it's cost prohibitive, and what I found out late in the process and, and to a misunderstanding, even if they were done, it wouldn't be buried under the excavated sidewalks, they would be buried in the center of the street.
Okay, so this conduit would not be suitable for fiber optics? It would just, as you referenced in your motion...
It's just a, for whatever limited wire would be for street lamps, should they be installed that way?
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
And, uh, item number one, uh, it reads, uh, building material Phase One, seven and three forty-one should be, would be concrete sidewalks and granite curving, and you want just to insert side, uh, concrete sidewalks and asphalt sidewalks, because it's gonna be bidding both, are they not? Or at least going to be?
Yeah, that's right, we're gonna ask for two.
I don't know how that would be worded without making it sound like we want to...
Two bids?
Well, we want two bids.
Okay, two materials are granite curving, uh, and alternatives of concrete.
Would be one set, one set of plans reflecting granite curving and asphalt, and the second set of plans reflecting granite curving and concrete.
Okay.
Joyce, does that make sense to you, for minutes' purpose?
Yeah, I don't even know if they have to do plans, but what we're looking for is tighter number, specifically to see if asphalt is an option and be able to see what, what it looks like. Because presumably they'll be generating some images. Joyce, would you read that if you can back to us, so we know what that...
No. How about, I put it together, and we're having a meeting on Wednesday, and then you can vote on it then. I'll put it together, because I don't wanna...
I like that idea.
Because even if I read it...
Listen to this.
Yeah, so...
So, today, we think we've come to agreement, so we're not gonna formalize it until Wednesday?
Well, we'll see that motion, but in theory, we have a working motion, yes. Jeff, you agree?
Uh, yes, but probably not this.
May we have it without you? Do we have your permission?
Yes, and I will forward comments, just email it to me.
Yeah, I'll write it up and get it to you well before Wednesday.
Before, so he can maybe make his, uh, vote.
But now you need to rescind your motion, so that, yeah.
Okay, I will rescind my first motion, uh, with the understanding that a new revised motion, um, was agreed upon in theory by the Board of Selectmen, and will be finalized at the Board of Selectmen meeting at four thirty on Wednesday afternoon. Is that what you wanted?
I, I just want the motion rescinded, and I'll present a new one.
Both rescinded.
Thank you. Second on that.
Second.
All in favor?
I, so did, maybe, yeah, okay. And so we're meeting on Wednesday?
Wednesday at four thirty. Agendas and, and supporting paper work was sent to you.
Yep. Just didn't write it down.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Second, and thank you all for coming and hanging in for...